Turn it on, there we go. Okay, welcome to the September 25th, 2007, meeting of the City Council. We'll start with Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will show that all members are present.
Okay. City Attorney, do we have any closed session report?
No, there's nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll have our pledge of allegiance and our invocation will be given tonight by Don Webb, and if Councilman Sullitch will lead us on the pledge tonight.
Please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we pray for your guidance. Grant to each of us keenness of mind, clarity of vision, and unflagging determination to vigorously pursue that which is right in your sight as well as in the eyes of all we meet. Give guidance to our mayor and city council members in making wise decisions that will be considerate of those who entrusted them with their office. Help us all make a positive contribution to the betterment of Newport Beach community, our county, state, and country. Let us understand rather than be understood, and where there is discord, let us bring unity. Help us to break down barriers, to widen horizons, to make us less judgmental, and to see the larger picture with a kinder conclusion. Thank you, God, for your presence among us. Amen.
Please be seated. Okay, do we have any presentations tonight? No, okay. Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, we'll start with Councilman Hen.
I would like to make sure that everyone is aware that we have one yet opportunity to enjoy yourselves and have a really great time this Friday night at the McFadden Square Memorial Dinner Dance, to be held at the Harborside Restaurant in the Balboa Pavilions. And for $275 per couple, you can have a great time, do some dancing, and get your name engraved forever at the base of the new McFadden Square Memorial. So please, please, take advantage of this opportunity. I'm going to be there with my wife, and she's a lot of fun. And so, especially after a glass of wine. And we're going to have a good time, so I hope to see as many people as possible there. It's a great cause. Thanks.
Councilman Currie.
I'd like to congratulate staff for the fabulous job that was done for the opening for the Newport Coast Community Center on September the 15th, and for the playdate that was held for the community on the 16th. There were literally hundreds of people there from across the community to enjoy this tremendous facility. For those of you who have not had the opportunity to go up and see the Newport Coast Community Center, it is truly one of the city's treasures. I think you will be truly blown away by the quality of this facility, by the quality of its design, and by the potential that it has to bring the community together in the Newport Coast. And I congratulate staff for truly a job well done.
Councilman Sullitch?
Nothing to say.
Councilman Webb?
I have nothing.
Councilman Deagle?
Yes, from time to time, people come to me with ideas, and in this case Judy Franco of the school board brought to my attention a forum that was taking place in Mission Viejo on keep your teenagers safe, and it was put on by the sheriff. So I went down to see what it was about, and I knew I was there when they had all the armored Hummer SWAT vehicles in the parking lot. And so they had the sheriff give a presentation on some of the issues that parents are trying to address with their teenagers, the internet, MySpace phenomenon, as well as teenage driving and teenage drug use. And so our forum that our police department is putting together will be held on October 10th at Newport Harbor High School at 6:30 PM. And so the PTA is busy getting the word out, and I invite all of you to attend that forum. And then secondly, the Third Annual Conference for Women will be held on October 16th. And I wanted to thank Hoag Hospital for their generosity in putting the program together and all the brochures. And the keynote will be by Dr. Stephanie McClellan, and the topic is "We Really Do Think Differently: Understanding the Complexity of the Female Mind." And that speech will be delivered and comprehended in 30 minutes for those who will be attending. And this will be held at the Balboa Bay Club on October 16th. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. Councilman Gardner?
Yes, I'm very pleased to announce that beginning October 2nd, at the Cronin Del Mar branch of the library, we are reinstituting the Children's Hour. It'll be at 10 o'clock on Tuesday. So please, if you're in Cronin Del Mar and have young family, be sure and come out for that. On October 3rd, we will have a Town Hall Forum for Cronin Del Mar. This topic will be restaurant noise and parking. I want to get residents' points of view before speaking to the restaurants about things that we can do to ameliorate the problems that occur because our commercial and residential areas butt so closely. And that will be October 3rd, 6 to 8, at the Central Library in the Friends Room. And finally, October 6th, from 2 to 5, at the Oasis Senior Center. We have an open house, and it will be an opportunity to see the models of the proposed new Oasis.
Thank you. And I have no items for announcement. Let's move on to the consent calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 15, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, we'll start with Councilwoman Gardner.
Number 6.
Number 6. Okay, Councilwoman Deagle?
None to pull, Mr. Mayor, but I did want to mention on item number 8, we're going to be resurfacing East Bluff Drive, and that contract will be getting started shortly, just before, in time for the annual Oktoberfest celebration in East Bluff. So, thank you, Steve.
Councilman Webb?
None.
Councilman Hen?
None.
Councilman Curry?
No items.
Councilman Sullitch?
None.
And I have none. I'd just like to also point out, items number 11 and 12 are two projects that I've been working on for a long time. And 11 deals with Sunset Ridge Park. We're hiring a new firm to come up with a concept plan, so we'll be moving that project forward. And also, item number 12, awarding the contract for median improvements on Superior. I think it'll have a significant impact on that very important entryway into our city, and I look forward to those improvements being done. So with that, does staff have any items they'd like to pull?
Mr. Mayor, nothing.
Okay, I'll invite the public up for any items that they would like to pull.
Hi, I'm Dolores Otting, and I'd like to pull item number 7 and number 12. Thank you.
7 and 12. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the consent calendar items 1 through 15, with the exceptions of items 6, 7, and 12.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
All right, let's take item number 6. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, usually this would be, I would have asked the questions during our study session, but since we didn't have a study session today. I do notice that on Exhibit A, in the description, the initial description, it talks about PWLM has agreed to perform the labor for irrigation repairs due to accidents or vandalism free of charge during the day. And yet, the contract, the scope of work specifically states that they're not responsible for vandalism, so it seems like maybe we need to clarify that a bit. And then a second question would be, they're responsible for pruning trees under eight feet in height. Who prunes the trees over eight feet in height?
We have a separate tree trimming contract for that.
Same with the city, type thing, okay.
They're very tall people.
So, is there a conflict there, Mike, with the vandalism? Oh, thank you.
Yeah, it is a conflict. That was one of the items that we negotiated with them, and it wasn't changed from the original scope of work. So, we can make that change.
So what's the result then, Mike?
If it is due to vandalism and repaired during normal working hours, they will not charge us for labor. So the contract is correct, the scope of work is inconsistent.
Thank you. Then I move to approve this.
Okay, do I have a second? Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? This is number 6, Dolores.
Hi, I'm Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach, and I just want to say that during the past couple of months, I've had opportunities to work with Mr. Harmon in the General Services Department. And as a matter of fact, and he does a good job of doing these contracts, and I'm not one that comes up and says that too many times. And he also does a good job of listening to the residents, and we have a problem on Spyglass Hill with one of the contractors. And they don't really keep any of the sidewalks clean anymore. But all you have to do is call someone in his department, and by the next day, they come down and they take care of it, because there are some incidences where people walk on that, up that hill, a great deal. So I just want to commend him for the great job that he does for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, I'll bring you back for a vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number 7. This is the Back Bay Science Center, completion and acceptance of contracts with Southern California Grading, Gammet Framing Company, Vance and Associates, excuse me, Inland Building Companies, S.H. Fish Electric, and Romero General Construction Corporation.
It's so appropriate. Hi, my name is Dolores Otting, and I want to say how appropriate it is for former mayor and council member Todd Ridgeway to be in the audience tonight, because this was a project that he spearheaded for years and got the money for it. And I don't think it would have happened without a lot of his pushing, and I'm really very happy for that also. And I was just kind of wondering if you could tell, you know, like the public a little bit about what the Back Bay Science Center will offer to the community? And I was also wondering if it's going to be able to offer any more testing of our own water supply that comes into the city on a regular basis, if there was any plan of that for the future, since there are many things happening with our water system in the future. Thank you.
Well, unfortunately, Dave's not here, and he would be probably the most expert. So Steve, you want to take a shot at it?
Well, actually.
Or Nancy?
We did a tour.
Okay.
The county has its water testing lab there, and it's a really fabulous site there. Fishing Game has a headquarters there, and there's also a teaching lab. And what we're trying to do right now is work with UCI, Coast Keeper, Surf Rider, and other groups to expand their educational programs and use the Back Bay Science Center as a coordinating force, so that we can do studies on the Back Bay that have never been done before in terms of sediment, in terms of the flora and fauna, and having, bringing in students that will be getting a good educational experience, but also contributing to our knowledge of the bay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As far as testing, using that lab for testing our water supply, that is not part of the way that we handle our system. We use outside labs to do the testing that's necessary, and we have very strict state and federal requirements that the city has to meet related to that, and we publish an annual report that also details the results of that.
Okay, anyone else want to contribute to that?
I would say all of the above, and there's also a video on our city website, too, on the Back Bay Science Center.
Okay, anybody else from the public that'd like to comment on this matter? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back for a vote. Well, we made a motion?
Yeah. Move to approve.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to item number 12, Superior Avenue Median Improvements Award of Contract.
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. I spoke on this item when it was approved during a budget, a month and month and month ago. So of course, I'm, not like I ever change my tune here in the city. And I'm not in support of this, and I know it's to beautify Superior Avenue, and they do need a light over at Superior Avenue. And I know, Mayor, you know, like Rosansky, that you have worked on this project. Unfortunately, what comes with beautification is lack of emergency response time for the public. You have no idea what it's like to be on Pacific Coast Highway and see a fire engine try to get down Corona Del Mar. It just doesn't happen anymore. And also, on top of which, this is an evacuation route for our city, and so I would think that if we're going to spend $768,000, $634,000, that there should be something else in this plan that talks about how we're going to use Superior to get people out one day. And we don't have that type of a mindset. You had a study session a couple of weeks ago on an emergency siren system, and like, you could tell that half of you or some of you didn't even think it was anything that was necessary in our community. And that's the problem. And if it wasn't for Councilmember Hen and the fact that his daughter tried to leave the peninsula on the night that we had the tsunami, I think until you live through something or until you have someone that you love go through that type of an experience, you understand that the missing thing in our city is what we do for emergency response, or how we make the citizens feel about what we do for emergency response. And you're going to spend money to do a survey, okay? And that should be one of the questions that you're going to ask people, is how, do you feel safe in case of, like, a piece of a plane falls off somewhere? And do you feel safe that you could get, I mean, like, get off the peninsula somehow? Up at the Golden Gate Bridge and down on Coronado, they have lanes, so that sometimes you need three ways in and one way out. But we don't even consider that type of an investment when we're going to spend basically the time it's all set and done, almost a million dollars. And I just think that we need to look outside the box a little bit more than what we do, because we take care of a lot of people here, and they depend on you for that. Thank you very much.
Okay, does anyone else want to comment on that? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment. I would like to say that although beautification certainly will be a result of this, I think there are certain traffic safety benefits that we're going to see here. There's a lot of folks that exit driveways, that, you know, cross double yellow lines and places going where they shouldn't be going. So from a public safety standpoint, I think that, you know, that's certainly the biggest part of it. I think the beautification aspect will definitely be a bonus. I know that there's property owners along the way there, including Hoag Hospital, which may ultimately wind up funding this through other agreements that we have with them. But even not, you know, we've discussed this with the West Newport Beach Association. They're, you know, 100% I think behind it, or certainly they expressed favorable comments with regard to it. And so I just see it as a big win for West Newport. I understand your concerns about evacuation. I believe that the medians are going to go where existing line medians are currently, so I don't know that we're going to be constricting the street, similar to what maybe they have done in Corona Del Mar, where they do have significant traffic issues. I don't think we see the type of traffic on Superior that we see over there. So I understand your concerns, but I guess I don't agree with them.
I move the recommended action.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
All right, that concludes our consent calendar. Okay, our first item is a public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Item number 16, Review of the Fiscal Year 2006-2007 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Do you have a staff report?
We have a consultant who administers the block grant for us. That's LDM Associates, and Rudy Munoz from that company will do the presentation. If you can get out.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you today, you have the annual report that is submitted to HUD in terms of the accomplishments that are made through the use of the CDBG funds, excuse me, that are allocated to the city of Newport Beach. The document is due to HUD by September 28th. It is a public hearing, so we do require that the item be open to the public for their input. Excuse me. The report kind of outlines, again, what the city has accomplished, and we are on track to meet the five-year goals that were established through your consolidated plan. If you have any questions, I think the report and the CAPR report are pretty straightforward. If you have any questions, I would be more than glad to answer them at this time.
Councilwoman Gardner?
This is something that most people aren't even aware of, I think. And I know this, that we do the regular public notice, but I think that there are many people in our community that would be interested in this, and other things that we also do that go out by public notice. And, you know, you have to be a real geek to be checking the public announcement part of the newspaper. So I'm just thinking that in the future, for certain things like this, we might want to make an announcement from staff, that this is available for review, so people could make comments in the comment period. We didn't get any comments this time, because probably nobody knew about it.
I think we do display ads and more publication when we're doing the annual action plan and the five-year consolidated plan, am I right?
That is correct.
And I think we're more likely to get comments on those than, this is more like an audit.
Okay, anyone else in council want to comment, have any questions? Thank you, sir. Anybody from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, bring it back for a motion.
Motion to approve is recommended by staff.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, I've had a request by Councilman Hen to move forward item number 20, the hiring of special counsel regarding group residential issues. I'm inclined to support his motion, but in order to change the order, it is customary that the council vote on it, so is there anybody not in favor of that?
It's normally part of continued business, isn't that the next item on the agenda anyway?
Well, we have public comments, oral reports, and planning commission agenda, and oral status report prior to continued business. So we'd be moving it up ahead of those three items. All right, I don't see any objection by council, so we'll move to item number 20, hiring a special counsel regarding group residential issues. I don't believe there's a staff report on this, so I'll kind of give the quick skinny on it. The council, at our last meeting, appointed an ad hoc committee consisting of myself as chair of that committee, and council members Hen and Gardner as members of the committee. The committee was empowered with the task of interviewing law firms to represent us for a special issue with regard to our group residential use ordinance. The committee did meet twice. We interviewed three law firms. We interviewed Best Best and Krieger, Richard Watson and Gershon, and I'm, was it, I'm blanking.
Jenkins and?
Hogan?
Hogan.
Jenkins and Hogan. Quite honestly, all three firms, I felt, were very highly qualified. At the end of the day, though, we did unanimously agree on Richard Watson and Gershon, and that is the recommendation that we're bringing forward to the council. And so we'll be filling in the blank here with that name. Does anybody in council have any comment, or Mike, would you like to say something?
Yes, I'm very confident that this will be a good selection for us. It's a 200-member, 200-lawyer law firm, very well reputed throughout the state for its work on behalf of municipalities. It has an excellent regulatory law department, as well as very good expertise in litigation matters associated with regulatory law. And so for both the present and with an eye to the future, we think it's an excellent firm.
Councilwoman Gardner, is there anything? Okay. Anybody on council have any comment on that? I'll open it up for public comment. All right, seeing no one, we'll close, and motion, please.
So moved.
All right, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll now go back to our original order and entertain public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. Is there anybody that'd like to make a public comment on a non-agenda item?
Bob Rush, Newport Beach. On July 24th, I brought to your attention a problem, along with compelling document evidence, and asked for your help. Not one of you helped me. Not one. And your inaction since then has forced me to come back here again tonight and put you on formal notice. City manager Homer Bledau and city attorney Robin Claussen are breaking law by intentionally and unlawfully shielding Bob Burnham from mandatory conflict of interest reporting as defined under state and city law, as a consultant to the city attorney's office, and this has been going on for four years. Conflict of interest reporting allows the community to see what personal matters of its city officials might cloud their judgment in doing the people's business. Newport Beach might not have the group home over-concentration problem it does today had the community been aware back in 2004 that Bob Burnham had had a business in the drug rehab trade while he was tinkering around with group home law. Furthermore, as Homer Bledau has publicly announced, Burnham is working on John Wayne Airport expansion issues for Newport Beach. And if Burnham's potential conflict and work product is anything like what it was with group homes, God help Newport Beach. This is why Burnham should be required to file conflict of interest reports, just like Kathy Woolcott, another consultant to the city attorney's office, and she's paid half the hourly rate and does less high-profile issues than Burnham. This is a duly convened city council meeting on the record and memorialized on video in front of this public forum. As such, I'm putting you all on notice that if this situation is not rectified within 30 days by obtaining and producing for public viewing all of Burnham's conflict of interest Form 700s for the last four years, as would have been had the law been filed, I will bring legal action against the City Newport Beach City Council in aggregate and individually against each one of you for neglecting your fiduciary responsibility to uphold the law. And if I have to bring legal action, I'll demand that the city cover my legal fees for causing the legal action needed to get you folks to uphold the law. Why must you be forced to uphold the law? I don't know. You explain to me. By the way, for your information, there's probably half a dozen lawsuits coming down the pike that would love for me to prove that you all play games with the law, and so go ahead, roll the dice. the dice, take your chances. You have 30 days to produce those conflict of interest reports. Thank you.
Is there anything but... Excuse me. No, not excuse you. Please refrain from applause. There's not a forum for that. Is there a attorney who would like to respond to any of these allegations?
My understanding from discussing these matters with the city attorney is that is her opinion that Bob Burnham does not have to file the conflict of interest forms. Kathy Woolcott is actually an employee of the city. That's why she fills out a Form 700 form. But I hear Mr. Rush's concern, so we'll be happy to relook at that issue to determine whether an appropriate decision was made on that matter.
Thank you.
Mr. Burnham is formally a consultant as defined by his contract, which specifically states he is a consultant, contrary to what Homer Blodow characterizes as an advisor role. In the last, in the July 24th council meeting, he said Bob Burnham is an advisor, and so therefore blah, blah, blah. Essentially, that's why he's exempt from reporting conflict of interest matters. If you look at his contract, it specifically says to perform consulting services. Furthermore, you, Aaron Harp, sent me a letter saying that Bob Burnham's contract of '04-'05 with the '06 extension is still the contract he's operating under today. That contract specifically mentions that he's, one, responsible for group home law issues, and, two, that he's a consultant. Today, I got that letter from you.
Bob, we're not going to litigate this here in public comments section. If you have any comments or any theories or whatever, please either write them down and transmit them to the... Transmit them to the city attorney's office, or you're more than welcome to call either Mr. Harp or Ms. Claussen and discuss those matters further with them. But this is not... This is not the time and place. Okay, anybody else? Public comments?
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. And as I mentioned at the last city council meeting during public comments, I recently read in the Daily Pilot that we are going to be so lucky that we are going to be getting fluoridated water. And unfortunately, people think that when they're going to put fluoride in their water, they're going to get pharmaceutical-grade fluoride. But what they get instead is a mining byproduct of the fertilizer industry out of Florida, which is called, if I could say it right, hydrofluoric acid, all right? And hydrofluoric acid will be coming in your drinking water in October. And what I have here is a couple of pages, because I know I only have three minutes. And this is a really important issue, because on July 29th, 2000, Dr. William Hertzey, vice president of the National Treasury Employees Union of the EPA, okay, and they... What their union represents is the scientists, engineers, lawyers of the Environmental Protection Agency in Washington, D.C. And the union voted to oppose fluoridation in 1997. It goes on to state that dental fluorosis is the only recognized negative consequence of overexposure to fluoride, and that's the modeling or the browning of the teeth. And by the time you have the browning of the teeth, it's starting to accumulate in your body. Also, what I found out the other day is that you fluoridate your water, I mean, like your water according to the air temperature. So we would get between .7 and 1.2 milligrams per liter. I called up Metropolitan Water District again this past week. Yeah, on the East Coast, they get more. I have like nine pages of just notes with all they are is websites with little paragraphs under them. But anyway, I called up this past week and spoke to the Metropolitan Water District. I can't think of his guy, of his name. But I said to him, you know, because I had, you know, because I had breast cancer at one time, I did a lot of research then, and I found out that if you take a 15-minute shower, you're really absorbing eight-ounce glasses of water. And so I asked him, how long can you stay in the shower now that we are going to be having fluoride? And he said, you're talking about dermal absorption, and we don't have to do any of those studies because this is okayed by the state and their risk and benefits group up in Sacramento, and also by the federal government. So on this last page, I found a site, because then I started to look up what the story is on dermal absorption. There's just so much hair that it's just overwhelming. And it says that the skin is the largest organ of the body, and in 1991, the EPA conducted that the average person can absorb more contaminants from bathing and showering than from drinking polluted water. Children are the most at risk. At one time, they used to tell you to give your children, you know, like fluoride tablets. Now they're saying that you shouldn't even give your child fluoride until at least the age of two. Look on the back of your... Everyone at home, look on the back of your toothpaste. It will tell you, if you swallow this product, you are to immediately get medical attention or call the poison hotline. I know, my time is up. But that's another problem, is we are going to be giving this fluoridated water here, and we charge for our water. And I really think that the city has the right to look at this, and they also have the right to put a disclosure on the water bill. You aren't supposed to let your child bathe with their rubber ducky anymore for 45 minutes because of their body weight and all their skin, and I appreciate the extra time. I know you're going to ask me to leave, but I really think that we need to address this issue. This isn't... I know you're laughing, and I'm laughing too.
I'm laughing at your comment, not at what you're asking.
I know, you're laughing because, I know. But this is like one of the most important things going on, and we don't need to get fluoridated. There's not one study that says it prevents cavities. As a matter of fact, you can't even swallow it, and the worst thing to do is ingest. But, you know, I'll be back in two weeks with three more minutes and a few more friends, and maybe we'll be able to say a few more things. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. Anybody else that would like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comments section, and we'll move on to...
Wait, wait, wait.
Was there someone else? Got to be quick around here.
Maybe we'll be like the French and not have to bathe. Anyway. My name is Mary Doniger. I'm in Newport Beach. And tonight, we were going to have several people speak to you on the rehab homes and some of the things that we are asking you to do. We're going to be passing a petition around that we hope will be in your presence in about two weeks. But about three years ago, the city council here, sitting right where you are, approved changes in our zoning ordinances that directly led to our current problems of over-concentration. Now, if the city council can do it, you can undo it. And let's do it for the better. The real shame here is that the city of Newport Beach, through its various councils, committees, and attorneys, have not protected us. In fact, the city has not been proactive here at all. The Citizens Group that Denise Obermeyer and some of the people on the Peninsula Forum, they've done all the heavy lifting for you. And it's because you haven't done your jobs. You've allowed this to have, you know, what they call creep, urban creep, or whatever you want to call it. It's creep. And anyway, in the area, we have groups in Newport Beach, like Stop Polluting Our Bay for the Water, Airport Concerns for the Airplanes Disrupting Our Air. But this problem is eating away at the foundations of the city. And when you allow decay to grow, you lose the roots of the community, and the roots of the people who made Newport Beach, not the transient addicts who are housing here. The voters who come here are understandably upset. Am I boring you, Mr. Rosansky?
No.
Fine.
Please go on.
They're understandably upset because the imbalance has affected their quality of life, and the value of their homes are being threatened by a tsunami of disabled addicts. And I don't think the Chamber of Commerce would like to advertise that Newport Beach is the rehab capital of the world. I don't think that would look good on our brochures, but that's what it is today. Now, I would like to believe that when each of you ran for office, you had a vision of how you could help improve your community. Well, here's your chance. One more thing. With politics and money, there's always rumors. And one of the rumors is that some of you on the city council are involved with these rehab houses financially. And I'd like to ask, are any of you...
I'm not here to answer your questions, ma'am.
That's very interesting.
You know what I'd like to know? Actually, I've heard those rumors myself, ma'am.
Yeah.
I'd like to know, who do you think is on the city council here that is profiting from that? I'd like to hear that.
You.
Okay, thank you. Your time is up.
You're one of... Fine. Maybe yours is too.
Anybody else that would like to make a public comment?
Mayor, City Council, Denise Oberman. I don't want to be doing this at this time next year. And I think what's being done has been very disrespectful to the citizens. Inaccurate information was given by the various members of the city staff at the planning commission meeting. So you're getting staff recommendations where there were a number of things that were not accurately represented to the planning commission, and it influenced their ability to effectively, factually evaluate the situation and develop a meaningful set of recommendations. They are not providing a set of recommendations if the staff of court reflects their recommendations, which do in fact resolve the issue of over-concentration. The thousand feet without an integrated set of components is meaningless. We need to deal with the uses, where they're permitted, where they're not permitted. They need to be applied, the regulations, to existing and new ordinances in a fair and reasonable manner. And that's why a procedure for CUP were recommended. They did not recommend that unlicensed facilities be prohibited. We have so many ambiguous uses that are going on in the city. That's a great portion of the problem. And even some of the operators are standing up, and some of the operators that are attempting to be reputable businesses and are pointing out that we have some very serious problems going on in the city, which are going to cause and have caused some very deep social and economic problems that don't just exist on the Peninsula and Lido. They have extended to other areas in the city. So we have a situation where those recommendations that have been provided are not meaningful, and the council's going to have to start over to review all the components. So the city has wasted time and resources, as have the citizens. And I'm not going to get into the specific elements. All I'm going to say is, we applaud you on appointing a new council, and we expect new ordinances that are satisfactory prior to the end of the moratorium period. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to make a public comment?
Hi, my name is Mick Bassidge, and I'm a resident of the Peninsula. I've been here about 11 years and been visiting for a lot more than that. My wife's family's been here since the 40s. So the... What I'd like to say is, I've had a, in regards to the homes, as we're currently speaking, I've had a function at my home in which I have invited neighbors and other residents to come, and probably 25 to 30 people. So... And I talk to those people quite frequently. They're neighbors, and they all have the same concerns that I do. They all don't show up here all the time. They're not all in Newport every day, but they are all property owners. And as one person, I think I probably speak for others. And that's what I'd like to pass on, is that there are some ladies here, he's being one, that speak for a lot of people other than just herself, even though you just see her here all the time. There are a lot of people that she is, quote, representing. As you self-represent areas, she's also representing people. So we hope you take her with more than a grain of salt, that she has a lot of people standing behind her. And that was just one thing. And if you are going to talk on the moratorium, hopefully we can implement some things. I don't know if that can be done. But if there aren't any legally complicated items that can be put in, I would hope that they would be added to the moratorium if you're going to be extending it.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Bill Hitchcock, and I've been in Newport Beach for about 23 years, and I'm a business owner here, small business. And I'd like to endorse what's just been said. I just heard about this whole thing just recently, and it disturbs me a great deal. And I would hope that you, as our elected representatives, would look to the interests of the public, rather than maybe the interests of some other people, and put this thing ahead of you and ahead of us, and make sure that the taxpayers and the property owners and the people who live here are represented here, and you accommodate them and what they're asking for. You've already heard all of our arguments. There's no point in my redoing it. But I know there's a lot of people who are very concerned about this. And this isn't going to go away if you think it's going to be done today. It won't. Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to make a public comment?
Good evening. Bear with me, kids, family. Cynthia Coler, West Newport. Mr. Mayor, when I first started this about a year ago, I came up here with my personal concerns, and you looked right at me and said there was nothing you could do. That was over a year ago. Then I came to the IROC meetings, after all the council meetings, and I told you that I had a parolee home behind me. And you looked right at me, and you said there was nothing the city could do, and that there wasn't anything you were going to do, because you were not going to put the city in a place where they could be sued. So I kept doing the meetings, and I kept coming to city council, and I did everything that I was asked to do. I met with people. I took pictures. I documented impacts. I've made... I've done everything that this city has asked to do in good faith with all of you. And I want you to know that when we left the last planning commission meeting, how disheartened and actually angry people were, that the planning commission reversed what they had originally suggested, which was our ordinances. We are now worse off than I was a year ago, when I started this process. So I guess the political will, what you were telling me, was absolutely accurate, that you weren't going to do anything. When I left that meeting, I was so upset, and I just, I have to say this on record, I had so many people come up to me and asked me to start a recall. Now, this isn't a threat. I'm telling you what the residents are saying. They don't feel represented. You are here to represent us, the residents, not the operators of, as far as I'm concerned, illegal businesses, doing businesses in our neighborhoods. They've segregated our neighborhoods. And now it's not just mine. As you can see, it's a lot of people. It's a cancer. Anyway, I needed to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else that would like to make a public comment?
Hi, my name is Joel Slutske. I live at 424 Violaito Nord. We had a meeting on Lido Isle. We had about 150 people there. It was the largest turnout since we gave away free doughnuts. And the mood of the people certainly wasn't as severe as the people on the Peninsula, because we're not facing the same issues that they're facing. But the mood was still the same, that you have an obligation for the health and safety of the whole Newport Beach. And I will tell you that there is a petition that's going to be put in place all through Newport Beach, and it will speak to what we would like to see in an ordinance. We would like to see that the unlicensed residential care facilities be allowed in MFR zoning, and only in MFR zoning. There is MFR on Lido Isle, by the way, so it's not... We're not saying we don't want homes on Lido Isle, but we want it to be controlled. We see an overlay zone that would be most of the coast, include Lido Isle, the Village, Balboa Peninsula, West Newport, Corona Del Mar, Bay Shores, and the Heights. And we would like to see 1,000-foot separation. We have all gone to the last planning commission meeting, and we've heard 75 feet. We've heard 300 feet. We've heard 500 feet. We've heard 1,000 feet. There doesn't seem to be a position anywhere, and we think that the city ought to take a position and make it 1,000 feet. It will still allow for a lot of homes in Newport Beach, but it'll be a logical, safe environment. And by safe, I'm talking about first responders getting in. I'm talking about not having institutionalization of the homes. I mean, there's a lot of health and safety issues that you've got to face up to. We would like to see, and I was kind of shocked at the end of the planning commission meeting, when the question was asked, I don't remember who answered, but the question was asked, do these homes have to have a city license? And the answer came back, yes. I don't believe they do right now. At least I'm told that they haven't, that they don't have city licenses. So part of the petition is that we want to see all the residential facilities have a use permit, and we want them to have a operating and business license. use permit and we want them to have an operating and business license. And anything that is illegal, we'd like to see abated immediately. And you will see the petition, I think you're going to see it coming from all over, you're going to see it from the Heights, you're going to see it from Corona Del Mar, you're certainly going to see, I can speak with a lot of authority, you're going to see it from Lido in spades, and of course, you know you're going to see it from the peninsula.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm Willis Longyear from Lido Isle. I've been here for over 40 years. When I first got here, the big issue was that Caltrans was going to run the freeway down Coast Highway. And the city had signed off on that and the land had been purchased and all that. A citizen group got together, perhaps similar to what's happening now, and told the city council it did not want that to happen. The city council said, "Well, it can't be stopped, there'll be lawsuits, et cetera, et cetera." We're in the same problem now. We didn't end up with a freeway down the Coast Highway. The Caltrans land was sold back to the people and all the cities up and down the coast canceled their agreements with the state. It's possible to do things that don't seem like they're possible and I think you're going to be faced with that and I hope you behave accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to comment? Public comment? Okay, seeing no one, we'll, okay folks, you've got to get up when I ask or we're going to just close the public comments.
I'm Shelley Dawkins, I'm a resident of Newport also, obviously. I try to put myself in your position, which is to accept the recommendations of staff and that is the planning commission. Planning commission like you are very concerned about lawsuits, about discrimination, I understand that. I was a former human resources manager and I'd like to tell you that all discrimination is not illegal. For example, we tested applicants for drugs and alcohol before we'd hire them. They cried and screamed discrimination. The courts upheld it, that we could test, we could even randomly test. The point is that, don't be concerned about discrimination, there's discrimination all over the place. Another thing is that we are the highest concentration of these residential care units. That in itself says that Newport Beach hasn't discriminated. Don't worry about lawsuits, instead, take what your citizens are telling you, don't drop these commercial money-making units right in the middle of residential R1, R1.5, R1.5 places. It absolutely destroys the neighborhood, the community, and Newport Beach. Don't be sucked in by, and I read their report to you and I attended that planning commission, don't be sucked in by their labeling. For example, concerned citizens, they felt, and I'm looking at item 3, paragraph 2, that it would be facially discriminatory. That's labeling, that's, you know, that's a good way to get out of this. The other one is to label group homes now as residential care facilities. Let's face it, they still are a blight on our absolute neighborhoods where the proposal is to drop them right into that kind of community. And the other night, we had people here that talked about the filth, the garbage, the needles, the arguing, the trucks that come and go, the parking, the problems that these cause. Don't do that to your people here. You're our last line of defense, don't get sucked in by the labeling, don't be concerned about the discrimination. Already, we are the most concentrated, we would win a discrimination suit. Please have the courage to listen to us and to provide for our safety, our security in this wonderful place called Newport Beach. Make it healthy for the neighborhood, for the community, and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak during public comments? Anybody else? Last time. Todd, are you getting up to speak? I knew there was someone else out there. I guess I missed my chance, yeah.
I just have a suggestion. Todd Bridgeway, Kings Road. I think three years ago, when I was up there and city attorney Burnham was here, Aaron, I would ask you to look at, we passed an ordinance, I thought, that prevented group homes from being in R1 zone. Now whether it's being enforced, I don't know, but we did do, I thought we did that. And while it was on the edge and there were a lot of group homes that were here and said, "We'll sue you," I think the intent of an R1 zone in a city is sacrosanct and we felt that we were on good ground to do that. So, I would just suggest that it's on the books, but I could be wrong.
Thank you, Todd. All right, anybody else that would like to make a public comment? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comments and I guess the only thing that I'd like to say is, you know, we all hear you folks, this matter will be coming to the city council. This city has literally invested hundreds of thousands of dollars and thousands and thousands of man-hours in this issue, this problem, however you want to characterize it, and I think you're doing a disservice to the staff, to the council, by saying otherwise. Personally, I think we're doing all that we can, we've hired new city attorneys as of this evening to handle this problem and we hear you and you'll have your opportunity to speak certainly when the council reviews the planning commission action, you know, when it gets here. I don't know when that is because we are having new council coming on board and it'll take a little while for them to get up to speed. I imagine that we will be extending our moratorium that expires sometime at the end of October, within about a month, and, you know, we can extend it for up to a year, I imagine we'll probably do that until we can craft an ordinance that we feel is the best one that we can possibly put together in light of all the circumstances. So with that being said, we'll move on to the planning commission agenda and oral report. Oh, I'm sorry. Oral reports from city council on committee activities, Councilman Gardner, actually, is there anybody that has a committee report?
Real briefly, the finance committee met and we interviewed firms to do a city survey on services and we want to know what you're thinking, we value your opinion on areas that we're doing well and areas that we might be able to improve. And so the committee will be forwarding to the council a firm, a recommended firm, for your review. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Dave, you're on.
Mayor and members of city council, there were two items that were considered by the planning commission September 20th, as you know. One of those was the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance dealing with group occupancies. The planning commission on a 6-1 vote did recommend to send that forward to the city council with language added to the resolution to indicate that they were happy to go along with whatever language the city council ultimately comes up with without requiring further review by the planning commission. Second item was a use permit application, request for outdoor dining permit and an off-site parking agreement for Panini restaurant, excuse me, on Coast Highway in Corona Del Mar. That was approved 6-1 for the new 640-square-foot indoor dining area and 164 square feet of outdoor dining. And that was it. Any questions? I can answer this for you now.
Does anyone in council have questions to Dave? Okay, thank you, Dave. All right, let's move on to current business. Item number 18, Oasis senior center concept plan and decision on whether to include the relocation of the Corona Del Mar branch library as part of the project. Have a staff report on this?
Mr. Mayor, Wes Morgan is going to provide a brief staff report in talking about the Oasis center project and then I will dovetail in as far as the Corona Del Mar branch library issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Tonight, we're rather excited to bring forward a concept plan that we've been working on for the last six months. Our journey through what would be outreach and analysis took us to six other cities, it took us to the PBNR commission, it took us to groups of homeowners associations presidents, committees that were represented by council members, and we worked with our architect, Bob Coffey, and several other city departments to arrive at where we are at tonight. I am going to touch on the cost estimate and the process and thank everybody from the Friends of Oasis, the city manager's office, the council, and all the committees and commissions that worked on this, and then I'm going to turn it over to our architect, Robert Coffey, who's going to spend a little time discussing with you how he arrived at the concept that you're going to look at tonight, and then we will get into the library discussion. As I stated, we began with a survey of over 600 participants. We immediately then branched out into Southern California cities where new centers had been built and took the best of what they had to offer that seemed to meet our needs. We had focus groups, we met with the leadership of all the different users at Oasis. As we continued to compile this information and arrive at conclusions of what would be best for a senior center that would meet the present and future needs, it started to shape up and we did finally arrive at a building that can fit the five-acre site, be a single-story structure that is compatible with the neighborhood, provides 36,000 square feet of new programming, and comes in at a cost estimate that's approximately $20 million. When you look at the cost estimate, I just want to point out that there are some features in there that we think protect us as we move through the design phase and get out to bid over the next 15 months. And we start off with the 36,000 square feet and in this booklet that I've left at your places tonight, you will see a detailed breakdown of how we arrived at that base cost estimate of approximately $13 million. We then added in a comfortable 5% for general conditions and a contingency for construction of 10%. Sometimes that number is 5. In the recently completed community center, that contingency of 10% also bought furnishings. In this budget, you will see $400,000 for the kitchen, which is separate, and another $600,000 for equipment that isn't part of that 10%. And then profit and overhead at 12%, sometimes that number will be 8%, but that arrived at a total of 16.5 million. And then assuming we would be in design for 15 months, we added an escalator of a half percent a month in construction costs and added another 7.5% to that number and arrived at approximately 17.5 million. And then when you start paying architects and construction management firms and buying extra equipment, we came to the $20 million figure. And that's the arithmetic of it, that's the thinking in it, and I'm covering a lot of ground in a brief amount of time because I think you're going to be more interested in what Bob has to say. But it was an exciting process and I think everybody in the audience who's here tonight for this issue enjoyed the six months. It was probably the easy part of the project as we've arrived at something that didn't cost us a lot yet and now we're ready to talk about that and see if the council's interested in adopting this concept and moving forward with the construction documents. And with that, I'll answer any quick questions before I turn it over to Mr. Coffey.
Okay, thank you, Wes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, excuse me a moment while I get the PowerPoint set up, I'm going to walk you through a brief presentation here of some of the documents that you'll see under project exhibits in the handout that you received. I did want to mention that there were eight primary goals, design goals, that we were given during the process of programming this particular project. Obviously, one of them was the space needs, which, as we looked at it, there was a strong emphasis on the health and fitness part being added to the current facility in terms of expanding programs. And with all the other input that we received, the space program needs were increased about 12,000 square feet over the current facility. We were asked to keep the center on one level, which is obviously, I think, a no-brainer when you're talking about a senior center. We were obviously asked to increase parking on-site, they have a parking shortage, and we're also asked to find a solution that would try to encourage the use of the parking lot that's across the street. We were asked to maintain the courtyard space, everybody loves the feeling of the current center and they wanted us to utilize as much as possible natural ventilation. There's some beautiful garden plots in the back of the existing center, we were asked to maintain those to the greatest extent possible. We were asked to try to create a short-term parking area to allow people to come and go from the center quickly and not be put in a position where if they got there and there's another program going on, they would have to walk a great distance if they had business that would take them in and out of the center for a few minutes. We were asked to improve the servicing and the functionality of the Meals on Wheels program. They load up quite a few meals each day and service a number of people in the communities who are asked to address that. And lastly, in terms of sort of a social aspect of the center, everybody and the friends was very interested in maintaining the family room or social commons of the entry space. And you'll see each of these, I mentioned these eight goals here at the beginning of my presentation because I'd like to point those out as I walk through the exhibits. As you can see, we've labeled this campus for a lifetime of health and learning. I have never worked with, we've done a number of community centers and senior centers and a group of seniors that we're working with here at Oasis have certainly distinguished themselves as being probably the most active, organized, and I think inspiring group that we've ever had the opportunity to work with. And I think that it truly is a campus in the sense that it's not a place for people to sit around and watch TV, these people are active, they want to be healthy, they want to contribute. Once again, just to walk over the plan, we're looking here at Marguerite, Fifth Avenue, and Narcissus. The organization of the facility, the new facility, is not too dissimilar to the existing facility with the exception of trying to make more use of the property. We've got approximately five acres here, the existing facility, the building only occupies about 10% of the property. When you add in the parking lot of the existing facility, it's about another 20%, so you've got about a 70% landscaped area on the existing property. And when people talk about the nice feeling of a building in the park, that's kind of a tough one to bring back to the seniors in terms of the design when you're asked to meet all the goals that I just outlined for you. But one of the ways we found to do that was to push the building forward a little bit where we decreased some of the setbacks on Marguerite and Fifth Avenue. We were able to preserve the courtyard and we were able to wrap the parking back around the backside of the building. What this allowed us to do is facilitate not only increasing parking on-site by 60 cars, it also allowed us to distribute the parking now around part of the building where it had not been before. The other thing that we did in the organization was to try to really encourage this connection to the parking lot across the street where you come across Marguerite and up into the center. There is a long, nice ramp that comes up there right now and you'll see as we look at this design that we've recreated something similar to that. The other aspect of it was to try to find this heart, if you will, the social commons, the family room space, and really put it in a location where it's at the center of the facility and took advantage of one of the great views down Marigold, one delightful aspect of that area of Corona Del Mar, certainly when you come down Marguerite, you get that wonderful vista looking down the Palm Line Drive to the ocean. And although the housing in this area is very dense and it's close, the views down these streets towards the ocean are kind of nice, so you'll see that our design is actually organized off of one of those axes. And looking a little more closely at the plan, you'll see that this is a campus of individual buildings organized around a central courtyard. Each of the building wings encompasses a series of distinct uses. The main entry is off of a drop-off point, comes into an outdoor covered, what we're calling an arbor entry court. It would be landscaped and would be like an arbor. And from this space, you could either enter directly into the multipurpose room or into the administration wing. The administration wing has offices for administration and offices for Friends of Oasis and you're met at the door by an information desk so that you're then directed to either ones of those locations. But passing, excuse me, passing through that, you come back to the family room, which is sort of at the core of this administration wing and has a bay window and some porches that then are aligned with that view down Marigold. Extending off of this, you have a series of classrooms which align themselves along the Fifth Avenue frontage and you also have the library reading room and computer center that sort of function off of this central heart to the facility. off of this central heart to the facility. Located over here along Marguerite is the Wellness Center and Exercise and Dance Room. You'll see when you go back to the site plan is what we've done is we've located this use, which is an assembly occupancy, meaning that it would have large groups of people gathering. We've located it so that it's directly across the street from this parking lot. The idea is obvious is that if you had a function going on in the multipurpose room and one going on in the Wellness and Fitness Center, the people who are closest to this activity would probably be more than likely park here, certainly since the walk is a short walk. And if you're going to an exercise class, I don't think we're asking much more of you than you would expect going to your class. And this would free up this parking area from that use. At the back of the complex is the art center. It has an outdoor patio that allows for servicing. We can bring in stuff for the woodworking. We can bring in equipment for arts and crafts. It allows them to have a patio area where they can allow some of the functions to migrate out to that area. Couple more small classrooms, and then you have the multipurpose room with a full kitchen. The kitchen has a covered service area to facilitate the Meals on Wheels program. It allows for access to come back where the truck can back in and be parked out of the way and not blocking any other traffic. And then we've created sort of this stage and functional area around the multipurpose room. I wanted to walk you through some of the imagery. It was our goal on this that the architecture work with the community. Rather than trying to adopt a style or talk about the architecture in terms of a style, I wanted to talk about it in terms of how it relates in scale and materials to the community. You have a lot of sloped roofs. You have buildings of all styles. They're crafted in the sense that they're homes, so there tends to be a scale to them that is a little smaller than what you mostly find in typical institutional buildings and municipal buildings. We wanted to utilize wood beams and trusses and some of the aspects of interiors that people find sort of familiar. We were looking at utilizing large operable windows to facilitate the cross-ventilation. And then we looked for combinations of materials that you find in the neighborhood. There's a lot of wood siding. We wanted to use a fossil stone, which sort of makes a reference to the ocean, and it's a stone material that actually is natural and actually has the embedment of seashells and other elements in it. And then, obviously, plaster. And you'll find as we look through the images that it was our goal to utilize those materials and forms in a way that we create something that was a contemporary environment. It was of today. It was addressing the future but had a traditional feeling to it. This is the view you would see when you enter in off of Narcissus and come into the entry drive. And you're looking straight through into what we call the Arbor Entry Court. The administration wing is here. The library reading room and computer center is here. Main event room is here. And as you walk then up and get dropped off, you come in underneath this covered arbor and would walk and be having, you would have a view back to the courtyard. You could walk right into the administration wing or right into the main event room. This would facilitate the opportunity for a program to be accommodated in the multipurpose room, and you wouldn't have to necessarily open up the center. You could accommodate that activity and still keep security for the administration wing. As we march on through, we've just passed through and looked at the Arbor Entry Court. This leads into the courtyard. The intimacy of the existing courtyard was an aspect of the center that all the seniors loved, and they wanted us to try to preserve. They do hold barbecues. They have concerts. They have some meetings out there. So the idea was to facilitate that with the idea of a patio. We have a covered area in terms of inclement weather. We're going to just show a fountain in here for right now in terms of our concept design. But you'll see that the circulation around this courtyard is covered and does have access into all the classrooms and all the spaces. So this does become sort of the communal heart to the project. And then if you were to stand at the back of that courtyard and look back out to the Arbor Entry Court, you'd be looking back along the classrooms at the art center on this side to the large classrooms along Fifth Street on that side. And just looking on into the picture a little bit more, you look back to the Arbor Entry Court. You see the conference room and the administration wing and some of the offices which have a view now directly into the center courtyard. Coming back to the plan, I wanted to just now back up and look at, once again, this transition across the parking lot across Marguerite is an important one if we're going to try to encourage use of this parking area. And looking at this rendering, we're looking now at a bird's-eye view from above the intersection of Marguerite and Fifth Street. And I wanted to focus your attention a little bit on this corner where what we're doing is facilitating not only a ramp condition that will come up, but sort of a combination of stairs and a series of step, landscape planters and trees. And that's kind of the view then exploded a little bit more where you can see that you can walk up from the street on the other side or up the ramp, and you enter into the courtyard. The other part of the project, as I mentioned before, is to try to give this family room, this connection to the neighborhood. You can see that the family room has a sort of a sitting area with a bay window that orients itself with the center line of Marigold, a couple of porches on either side. And then this would be what you would see conversely if you're traveling up Marigold looking back at Oasis as opposed to just a brick wall, which you see right now. And conversely, the views then from the center out down Marigold look towards the ocean. And then coming back at sort of the entry element, we saw the Arbor Entry Court and its connection to the courtyard. And then looking once again at that space, you can see how that is sort of the center of the space and functions very similarly to the way the current facility functions. Once again, we've tried to employ the use of some sloped roof forms. We've got a combination of the stone at the base of the building. These roof forms slope down. There is a grade change. It comes up here, so we're sort of bringing the scale of the building down to the street. We've got a combination of some plaster and the wood siding. And then the roof forms are always working to diminish the scale along this elevation right here. There's a large glass, series of glass windows along the exercise area that do take advantage of the opportunity of people when they exercise to look out across the parking lot to the park. And as I said, we've sort of started to refer to this as a campus for a lifetime of health and learning. It is like a school in the sense that I think most of the people there are there because it is part of their social structure. It keeps them young and active, and they always come away with learning something new every day and sort of expanding on their lives, but I think the lives of all those who come in touch with them. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Bob, I got a call yesterday from someone who lives in Harborview Hills along that first row and is very concerned about two things. One is that the, particularly the multipurpose room, I believe, as he said, is 30 feet high.
The, when we actually did the first presentation at Oasis and we invited a number of the homeowners associations down, we were very early in our design, and we had it at 30 feet. That's a correct number. The existing, I think the height of the existing mechanical screen's about 21 or 22 feet.
Excellent. He gave me 25 feet.
We've actually, the current design has been lowered to 22 feet.
Terrific.
So since that original presentation, we've actually worked at trying to keep those roof forms a little lower. It's improved, I think, the scale of the project. We are very sensitive to that. I think another follow-up question that we got on that was I was asked, could I guarantee that the trees would not get into anybody's view plane? And I said, I couldn't guarantee that, but we would work to try to select trees that would be, they would provide shade and be short. We do show some palm trees there. We're doing a conceptual landscape plan where we're trying to select species that don't max out like some of the trees that are currently on-site. I know they've been a sort of a bone of contention with a number of the homeowners, and we do not have any plans to reproduce that at all. But I think on the architecture, we've looked to try to lower the profile of the building. And our landscape plan, I think we'd like to try to have some greenery because I think that does lend a large amount of the quality to the building that it has now. But in being sensitive to the view corridors of the residents above, we're going to try to keep those tree species below. And we did commit ourselves, and I'll follow through on this, that we would stake the profile of the building for their review.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on council of questions of art? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the other issue associated with the Oasis project is, for some time, staff has been thinking about, once the Oasis project got underway, it would be a good opportunity to try and deal with what we see as a future issue regarding the rebuild of the Corona del Mar fire station. That fire station is very small. It currently houses two paramedics in the back in a trailer. And the bay is very undersized, and it requires very careful positioning of our apparatus whenever they are backed in in order to make it in safely. So particularly whenever the city facilities financing plan was being developed, staff really took a look at what facilities we really needed and what our priorities were. At that time, Chief Riley felt like the first priority as far as fire and lifeguard services was the fire station right here adjacent to City Hall because of the earthquake issue that is associated and the need for that station to be in full service if an earthquake struck, especially in this particular area. But the second fire station need priority was the Corona del Mar station because of it being undersized. And that posed the question then, how are we going to get room in order to enlarge that station in the future? And it seemed like the Oasis project would provide a really good opportunity in order to build a library component and relocate that library to the Oasis project. So that's how the concept really started off, and that's where we've been traveling down that road for the last six months. Certainly, there was the need to go out and reach out to people in Corona del Mar and talk about what could happen to the Branch Library. And at the request of Councilmember Nancy Gardner, there have been three meetings at the Corona del Mar library. We've tried to advertise and notice those meetings as well as we possibly could. The space was pretty small, but each of those three meetings had in excess of 80 residents that attended and really shared very strongly their opinions with us as far as relocating that Branch Library and making it a part of the Oasis project. Now, I think based upon those three meetings, we heard several things that were said strongly by those people in attendance. One was that they preferred to keep the library where it currently resides. They liked that location, even though the location at Oasis is only about three and a half blocks away. They strongly felt like that would really change the character of their neighborhood by that relocation. And of course, we also talked about it being a little different library, a library that was really geared more towards seniors than the full library services that we have now. And that was something that the residents did not like to hear. Number two was that they wanted to maintain the children's section of the library. Even though the library usage has gone down, and I'm talking about the overall usage of that library, has gone down approximately 20% since the central library opened. And there were a number of young parents there that said that was really an important piece of the fabric of the Corona del Mar community, that they used it to take their children and grandchildren. And just because the number of books that are checked out for children are not that high, that doesn't mean that it isn't used a lot and is very important to a number of people there. And thirdly, there was strong support for the new larger fire station. I think most people came to the meetings, you know, not realizing that the fire station was really a big part of the equation of what we were looking at. And it really triggered the thought about relocating the library branch to Oasis. So I think there was a strong understanding that came out of those meetings and a recognition on the part of those people that the fire station probably is undersized and that that too is a very important component for the life safety for Corona del Mar. And they wanted to see a fire station that really served that community very well. So there wasn't a strong attachment to the existing physical building that is there, but there was a very strong attachment that was expressed for the location of the building because we talked about several options. And Councilman Hen really worked off of these two slides here. And let me see if I can, if I can see. Okay. Right here is the fire station, and right here is the library. Right up here is the Oasis, and this is about where the location of the library would be, so about three and a half blocks right there. And Chief Lewis can get into more detail if you want to hear more about the issues associated with the fire station and its size. But he feels like, and he stated in the meetings, that the location of this fire station is ideal. It is very close to Pacific Coast Highway, and that's important in order to get the truck out and responding quickly to various parts of the community. The next slide that we really worked from was a larger picture of the fire station and library. So here is the end building. Here is the fire station. This picture is a little old in that we've had the trailer back here for, I would say, at least two years. It houses two paramedics because there isn't room for them to have sleeping quarters inside. So there's a temporary station here. We've had some communication issues with the paramedic's trailer in terms of getting communications to them, in terms of situations where they need to respond to, and that is troublesome. And of course, here is the fire station. So, excuse me, library. A couple of possibilities that we talked about, and there's no need to get into great detail unless you really want to, is that staff tried to come up with some options if council wanted to as to how to keep both the library and the fire station on these properties. It seemed like one option that we identified was going to a two-story fire station and even encroaching on this property right here, relocating this parking. Since the trailer is back here, there could be more parking for the people working the fire station, and maybe parking would not be lost. Another option that we looked at and talked about with the people in attendance was taking off this portion of the library right here, adding a smaller portion to the library here. That sounded like something that was not really strongly opposed. And then it would provide this space and this space for an expanded fire station and also maybe having the space for the fire truck to come and then enter the bay from the back. So those are a couple of things that we looked at. Another possibility would be, you know, tearing down the existing library and going to a two-story library that would be about the same size. So those options were reviewed with the citizens. I don't think people, there was a consensus expressed as far as a strong preference for any of those options, but the point was made that if council is willing to forego the option of relocating the Corona del Mar library to Oasis, that there are some options that could be looked at and studied on the current site. So I think that about covers it. If you have any questions regarding the library issue, I or other members of staff will do our best to address them.
Okay. Does council have any questions of staff? All right, I'll open this up for public comment.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Paul Glowinski. I live in the best zip code in America, 92625 Corona del Mar. In case you can't tell, I'm here in strong support of keeping the Corona del Mar Branch Library exactly where it is, on Marigold. I'd like to commend Councilmember Gardner and Homer for putting together the meeting. I was able to attend the early morning meeting, and your summary of the meeting was exactly my takeaway from it. This evening's got to be difficult for the council members. So far, you've been accused of conflict of interest. You've been threatened with lawsuits. There's a suggestion of a recall, and in my opinion, a general level of disrespect. So I'm not echoing any of those comments at all, but I am here to strongly ask you for your support to keep the library on Marigold. And I have over 50 current signatures of residents in that same effort, and I'm seeking more. So if anybody would like to join me, I'm happy to secure your signature as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm really not speaking for the library one way or the other because I'm speaking for Friends of Oasis in the first portion of your meeting this evening on item 18. My name is Evelyn Hart, and I am the president of the Friends of Oasis. And I'm also, I was looking around to see if Dr. Perry from Hoag Hospital was here. He did have an emergency this afternoon, and I guess he's not here, so I'll also speak for Hoag Hospital as part of this endeavor for rebuilding. Whatever happens to the library is in your good hands. You have a very active neighborhood, Nancy. And unanimously, our board of directors and as many of the 4,000 members that we have of Friends of Oasis are supporting this project. members that we have of Friends of Oasis are supporting this project, we have a very, um, influential Friends, um, we, influential, there's so many, uh, boards here, um, building, Oasis Building, uh, Oasis Building Fund, um, members that are here this evening too. If you have any specific questions, we have different ones that have different expertise that serve on the committee that would be happy to answer questions for you. But unanimously, we want to tell you that this plan is, is really so very well received. And, um, with or without the library portion, it, um, we would like to see you move ahead this evening and, uh, offer our support. Um, and also, yes, Nancy, we are having an open house on October sixth and invite anyone in, in the community that would like to attend between two and six to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Evelyn, if we did, I haven't, it sounds like that we're going to leave the library where it is, but, uh, would you anticipate that the little piece that's shown on your plan as a library would stay and be utilized either as a senior library or another meeting room or computer room or something like that?
Thank you, Councilman Webb. We appreciate that question. We, we have a library now at Oasis. It's a small one with a reading room, uh, combined. Um, we need a library and we will continue to have one. We would not, if, if the library doesn't move from the Corona Del Mar site, uh, then we will continue with, um, volunteers to run our library. And that isn't quite as good, of course, as, um, professional. It's very important to seniors to have a one-stop, and, uh, so we will continue having library, uh, books picked up. We will, we will add a computer and that sort of thing to make the library certainly a better, small library. If, um, if, if the council decides to move the Corona Del Mar Library up there, it will be, of course, a full, um, branch library. But, um, but that will make, that shouldn't really interfere with any decisions on the, um, Oasis this evening.
Actually, it wouldn't be a full library because, uh, the understanding was there wouldn't be a children's section.
Um, I don't think that was, any of that was actually detailed.
Well, that was, uh, under staff's understanding. It was always presented as a senior library.
Uh, yes, a senior, more of a senior library. You're right. Do committee members want to say anything?
Thank you, Evelyn.
Mayor, members of the city council, uh, my name is James Trush. I reside at six-twenty-one Narcissus. Uh, I first came to the library issue because my neighbor Nancy Phelps, a resident of Corona Del Mar since the nineteen-fifties, told me a story about a woman named Dorothy Harry. Dorothy, Dorothy Harry's name is on a plaque as you walk in the entrance to the CDM Corona Del Mar Branch Library. Dorothy Harry was a woman, uh, very, um, kind and gracious woman, I'm told. I never knew her. But my neighbor Nancy Phelps told me a story about Dorothy Harry and how Dorothy Harry donated two lots to the city in nineteen fifty-seven, and how she stood on the grass, my neighbor Nancy Phelps with Dorothy Harry, and how Dorothy Harry was concerned and wanted to make sure that those lots were used for library purposes. Nancy told me about this, Nancy Phelps told me about this, because she had heard through her friends in the library board organization that there was something going on and they may eliminate the Corona Del Mar Branch Library. So I looked into it a little bit. I got some documents from the city, uh, archives, old agenda minutes. As it turns out, there's an agreement between the city and Dorothy Harry dated October fourteen, nineteen fifty-seven, in which the city agreed to accept those lots and to use the lots or their proceeds for library purposes. The city then separately purchased four nearby lots, built the library in the location where it now is, took the Dorothy Harry donated lots, which were agreed to be used for library purposes or their proceeds for library purposes, sold those lots, and did with the proceeds what was anticipated, which was use the proceeds to build the library. That all happened in nineteen fifty-seven. Uh, I've submitted those documents to the city clerk, and I, I see it's been received by the council. Excuse me. Hopefully, everybody can get a chance to look at those Dorothy Harry gift documents. In fact, I submitted a copy to the city manager, Councilmember Gardner, at some of the wonderful meetings that she set up in the branch, which were, which were wonderful for the community. So thank you, Councilmember Gardner. The Dorothy Harry gift issue has not been addressed, unfortunately, though. As it turns out, from everything I've been able to determine, I looked at the website for the library board, I've looked at the, the, the staff report on this issue, and it doesn't look, look as if this Dorothy Harry gift issue is being addressed at all. Uh, and in my opinion, uh, if you look at the agreement, the city signed it, they agreed to use the lot, lots or the proceeds from the sale of the lots for library purposes. And that's exactly what was done. Uh, I think there is an obligation on the part of the city to honor the gift from Dorothy Harry. Certainly, some obligation was felt at the time. There's a plaque with her name on it at the entrance to the library. So I would ask, first of all, number one, that the, that the Oasis issue not include a, a library component because, as I perceive it or understand it, that's hand in glove with eliminating the branch library from where it is. So I'd ask the council, I joined in this gentleman's comments, that the, the library remain where it is. And secondly, I'd ask the council to set a separate agenda item and look into this Dorothy Harry gift issue. City managers indicated that there's a future issue on expanding the fire station. We all need a good and functional fire station. But the Dorothy Harry gift issue and how that's going to be honored and respected and carried forward, uh, should be addressed. Uh, and I'll give everybody the benefit of the doubt that nobody knew about this, but it's surprising that a resident had to go and dig these documents out of the archives because there is a gift, there was an obligation, and it should be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Actually, we did receive the documentation, and I asked the city attorney, um, to, um, review that and comment on that. So do you have a, I mean, did you have an opportunity to do that?
Yes, our office did have an opportunity to review the, uh, relevant documents. There were, he is correct, there was an original agreement that was entered into on October fourteenth, nineteen fifty-seven. Uh, that agreement was subsequently amended, and in essence, what the amendment provided was that the funds from the sale of those two lots were to be used to pay for the construction and furnishing of, uh, the Corona Del Mar Library. Uh, the funds were utilized in that manner, not used to purchase the lots, and there's currently no deed restriction on, uh, the use of the lots.
So would you say that the gift was fulfilled or the bequest or whatever you want to call it?
Yes, it, it, it's evident from a review of the entire history that, that, um, Dorothy Harry, uh, agreed to the use of the funds for the construction. The, the agreement was specifically amended to allow for that so that the funds could be used for the construction and furnishing of the library. And, um, based on our research, it, it, it appears that the, um, that her wishes were fulfilled.
So is there any reversion or some type of right in either her family or some obligation on the part of the city somehow?
Um, there's no legal obligation.
Okay, so it's, we fulfilled our legal obligation, so there may be some type of a moral obligation, but we've done what we were supposed to do with the money?
That's right. We did what we were supposed to do with the money, and, um, you know, this agreement was entered into, you know, fifty years ago, and I fulfill, I feel the city's fulfilled its obligations, uh, to Dorothy Harry.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you for the comments. Um, I'd appreciate if the city attorney could provide me with any legal citations that support that conclusion, if he has any, case law, thing of that, things of that nature.
I'd be happy, and you know, I think it might be best if, maybe we sit down at some time and we can pack over the issues.
You've got my name and address on the letter that I submitted.
I do have that information.
Because it would be my conclusion that the original agreement anticipated that the proceeds, that the lots or their proceeds would be used for library purposes. Lots were sold, then their proceeds were taken and used to help construct the library. And so the gift did not go away. The gift attaches to the library at that current location, and some recognition of that should be, uh, entered into by the city so that years down the road, uh, that's not ignored. I mean, gifts are the lifeblood of the library, and a woman was kind enough to donate two lots to the city for that purpose, and it should, something should be done to recognize that and not just say, well, we, we've fulfilled our obligation and now it's fifty years later.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting, and interestingly enough, in all these years that I've been attending city council meetings, I also used to attend library meetings. And the story that Mr. Trush has been stating is one that I remember hearing ten, twelve, thirteen years ago at the library also meetings. And that was the fact that the, I mean, that the property was basically given to the city to have a library there basically in perpetuity. So I found it interesting to see this item and, and because then what I heard lately is the fact that there's gossip going around at the Oasis that, um, that all of a sudden, all the documents and the trusts and the deeds and everything were all missing. And, and so I'm, I'm glad that this all comes to light, um, tonight. And, um, my question also is, um, because I, anyway, um, on, on the wellness and fitness center, um, could somebody kind of explain, because people are asking me, um, what is Hoag Hospital's, you know, like, connection here, um, with this wellness center? And they're wondering if later on downstream, they're going to be hap, like, right now, they have somebody that comes twice a week and they get their blood pressure checked for free. Um, so are people going to have to pay extra for any of these services or what is the vision, um, for this? And what is Hoag's, um, influence on this? Is there, thank you. That's what people are wanting to know. Thanks.
I hope their influences are going to be donating millions of dollars to help build it.
That's great.
Well, I think they have altruistic motives, just like Dorothy brushed it, or thrush.
I'm Elizabeth Starr, and I lived in Corona Del Mar for thirty-five years. And I'm here to advocate that the city also have a mini-branch at Oasis to serve that population, to eliminate them having to get into their car to actually use our library services, much as what the library has now done in Newport Coast, where you can check out books, you can request books or materials, and they will be delivered there. I think we have a large population that's coming to Oasis, and I commend Oasis for their wonderful design and what they're doing. But I think the city should consider, um, serving that population also with a legal kind of a branch. Of course, I don't want to close the Corona Del Mar branch. It serves many, many purposes, and, um, it should remain where it is so we have our village complete, people being able to walk to the grocery, the bank, the hardware, library, and the post office, saving car trips on our coast highway, which is so, um, busy now and difficult. And most of the people who do use that branch like to be able to walk. To have a library at Oasis, um, if it does have some component, um, it's a dangerous place for children to get to because of Marguerite. Um, I go down Marguerite lots of times every day, and it's a dangerous intersection there at that, that spot. So I hope we can keep Corona Del Mar branch open in its location, and perhaps the concept that one neighbor has come up with of redesigning and putting a library and a fire station in one building, um, might be an idea to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, yes, I'm Virginia Campler, and I live at, on Point Seta, which is the beachside of, uh, Corona Del Mar. I really hope we can keep the library where it is, uh, particularly when I heard that the Oasis people who are planning to have the library there, which is great, however, they said they do not want children at this library at Oasis. So why don't we keep it where it is? Also, I understand from, uh, the city manager, Homer, that the police station next door is a very efficient one and that it is good the way it is. However, the paramedics need more room so they could go up above on the second story. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi, Laura.
Hi, my name is Laura Curran. I live in Corona Del Mar. I wanted to talk on the concept of the Oasis. I think at Oasis, there's a lot to like. Um, I think my friends and I are looking forward to making our, looking forward to making reservations for the future when we can use the facility. What I would like to see as consider as we plan this building is integration of LEED principles. These are principles for leadership and energy and environmental design. These principles encourage things that, uh, benefit the environment and save energy, such as the integration of solar technologies, capturing groundwater, um, composting on-site of both your, um, uh, paper waste and your green waste, um, using design for usability such as the planner discussed, having, being able to open your windows for ventilation so you have lower air conditioning and/or heating costs. Lower water use, use of local vegetation. We are going to have in, in Newport Beach shortly, the Environmental Nature Center, which is going to be a pilot building in Newport Beach for LEED standards. It's really going to be a shining example of what can be done using LEED standards in Newport Beach. And it would be wonderful to see the city use Oasis and integrate some of these principles into the Oasis Center as well, um, as we go forward. And finally, on the topic of the library, um, if we do have a library at Oasis, I think it would be a great opportunity to have programming which integrates seniors and children. I mean, I think programs where you bring together the generations actually benefit the generations. So when I thought of a library at Oasis, I thought of a place that would, where seniors and children could interact and that multiple generations could come together and use the facility and learn from each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anybody else I'd like to comment on this matter? Okay, seeing no, who's co-public comment? I would ask, um, architect, do we have any LEED opportunities here?
Uh, we've already discussed this, and we had fully planned to make the buil, building LEED compliant, and that they have different categories of, of ratings, and which category we actually try to achieve would be a balance of, uh, what we can integrate into the project and some of the costs associated with it, but certainly that's where we were headed with the design.
Great. Well, certainly the garden would be a good place for.
So we'll get at least a silver one?
Silver, platinum, gold?
At least silver?
Thank you. All right, does council have any other questions of staff before we?
Uh, not a question, just a comment that, um, from our meetings, there was tremendous support for maintaining the branch, and I just, I said, well, you know, it's always nice to put your money where your mouth is. And I got, uh, an email just yesterday, someone committing to a five-thousand-dollar contribution for the Corona Del Mar branch.
Yeah, sounds great. Where's the check?
In the mail.
In the mail, okay. Anybody else? All right, well, we have, uh, I guess, an action item here as to approve the concept plan for the Oasis and determine, uh, whether or not it will contain a branch library component. Um, why don't we take the first part first? Is there anybody that has any objections or wants to make any comments with regard to the, the concept of the plan?
I think the plan's an excellent plan, and I would, uh, move to, uh, support the, the plan that's presented to us with their small, separate library and, uh, leave the Corona Del Mar library where it is.
I second that.
All right, well, I don't think we're deciding on the Corona Del Mar Library branch tonight. Let's leave that off. That'll be for another day as to whether, I understand, but I don't think that's part of what the action item is. The action item is, do we include a branch library or, or some reasonably, reasonable facsimile of that in the, um, Oasis Senior Center? Or do we just go with maybe a scaled-down version similar to what they have now? Uh, my understanding is that it will reduce the size of the building. Is that accurate if we decide not to introduce the, the full-blown concept?
We're racing to that. As you, as you, excuse me, as you, as you see on the plan, we did have a set aside of fifteen hundred square feet for library or resource center types of activities. Presently, the center has approximately four to five hundred square feet. And Celeste's already reprogramming it depending on what decisions are made, but it is still in the project, and, and I've been advised by who I report to to leave it in the project for now. It's, it's about nine hundred.
The square footage you're talking about?
Yes. And what, what that square footage becomes is going to be up to others, but we will continue to move forward with that size of a facility.
Okay, so the building won't change regardless of whether we include the, what are we calling it, the branch library component or not?
Whether, whether it's a branch library or just how the Oasis functions now, we will leave the square footage as is planned in the concept.
Or it may be something else.
Or something else. Counseling center. It's right next to the computer lab, so it, we would integrate.
All right, so we have a motion to, um, approve the concept plan without the branch library component, other than?
Wait, 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 wait. We approve the plan as was submitted.
Mm-hmm.
Don't even say "without the branch library." We're not discussing that right now. We have the building piece that would accommodate it if we decide later on to do it, but it will be used for other purposes if we decide not to do it.
That's the motion?
Is that the motion?
I second.
The plan that you see up on the board is what I'm, I'm moving to approve.
Okay.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment?
Well, let me ask the question, because the, the agenda says determination of whether it will contain a branch library. I mean, that's the action determined.
Right, that's what I was trying to determine, but.
Well, I think we ought to determine it.
I mean, I guess we don't, we can just say we're not going to determine it today, if that's what you want to say.
You said that you didn't want to discuss whether or not we were going to have, uh, the Corona Del Mar branch library. To me.
No, I said I don't want to discuss the closure of the existing branch next to the fire station. That is not the agenda item tonight.
Right.
Question is, are we going to include, uh, or in the concept plan, a relocation of the Corona Del Mar branch library in the Oasis Center?
Right. Mr. Mayor, the city manager was the author of the report. If you can give us some background, that might be helpful.
Well, it, it seems to me like after tonight, if the council approves a concept plan, however you define it, then the next thing we need to do is select an architecture, and then they go forward with plans and specifications. So it is going to be important that the architect know whether the space is going to be used as a 1,500-square-foot library, or whether it's going to be just kind of space that would be very flexible in use. I think there would be some design issues in terms of if that space was library space.
Right, I understand, but I, I guess what I'm getting at is if, let's say, the motion is, um, to approve the concept plan without the branch library being part, all right? That means that the branch library will not be moving to Oasis. That will be the result. The question is to what will happen with the existing library and fire station that's still open. Maybe that it'll stay exactly the way it is. It may change the configuration. It may go away entirely and not have a substitute location.
Yes.
At Oasis to depend on.
And that was discussed in our meetings.
And that's my understanding.
I made very clear that, that this was not a solid guarantee, that we were taking a certain amount of risk by not putting it there.
Right. And so the discussion, I just, what I'm getting at is that we're not here to discuss whether the branch library is going to close or be reconfigured, expanded, contracted, whatever, two stories or not. That's, that's a different agenda item for a different council meeting on a different night.
Okay, but now, we've had somebody already suggest that there be a Corona Del Mar branch and a senior branch library at the location fulfilling this location. And I'm not sure that I can support that you have a separate, formal, senior branch library there, but if it's something that is, can fit within their programs and the space is there for them to operate their, their library system as the way they do today, I think that's appropriate. And I think that the square footage that we have shown should not be reduced if we determine that we're not going to have the branch library there.
Well, they're saying, I think that's what he said, is they're not reducing the square footage. The building will remain the same whether the branch is there or not. You know, Councilman Curry wants a clear, or, based upon the agenda item, I agree with him.
Let me make.
They're asking about the relocation of the branch library to.
Let me make a substitute motion, if I may.
Please.
It would be to approve the Oasis Senior Center concept plan, which would not include the relocation of the Corona Del Mar branch library as part of the project.
Okay, I think that's what I tried to say earlier, but didn't make it. So we have a motion and a second.
But does that not preclude that 1,500 square foot being used as a seniors' library?
No, I don't think it does. I mean, they can program it for whatever they want.
So we're just saying, branch library's not moving, but are open to being senior living. That's a good way to put it. And I think too, in speaking with the city librarian today, our circulation's over 1.5 million items. There's a big demand in our community for library services.
No doubt. Any further comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One of the true joys I have in this job is the work I get to do on the Oasis Committee, because this is really one of the premier facilities in our city, and it's going to be spectacular when it gets built. And I, and I don't want us in our discussion of, you know, what the agenda item's supposed to say, to miss sight of the presentation that we saw today and the real value that that facility is going to bring to the community. Now, I support Councilmember Gardner's motion, and let me say that I'm one of the guys who initially believed that this was a great opportunity to consolidate library facilities and, and close down the Corona Del Mar library. And this is a case where citizen involvement, and particularly Councilwoman Gardner's leadership in organizing and having the outreach to the community, and in sitting on the committee, I think, has certainly changed my mind, and I think changed the direction of where we were going with this by, by the action that's being taken today to move forward with Oasis, and then, you know, continue to look at our options there at Corona Del Mar for keeping that library viable. And I, and I commend her for her leadership in that regard.
Thank you. Any further comment? Please vote.
Motion carries.
You can applaud. No, you can, actually, you can't. It's, I'm, you can't applaud, even though I know you're applauding silently. Um, okay, agenda item number nineteen, Program Charter Amendment Regarding Public Pensions. I don't know if there's a staff report on this. I know this was brought to the council by Councilman Curry. Um, there's no staff report. Okay, well, then I'll let Councilman Curry express his views on this.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a, sort of, an opening statement. I know there's some folks in the audience on both sides of this issue who'd like to speak, and perhaps some of my colleagues would like to speak as well. You know, one of the things that I hope that all of us bring to this council is an ability to observe the strategies and policies that other jurisdictions have used to ensure the financial stability and improved service delivery in their jurisdictions. And here in California, there can be no clearer example of a successful strategy to restrain unfunded pension liabilities, and that employed for the past 100-plus years by the city of San Francisco. In an environment where cities and counties are grappling with unfunded liabilities, sometimes in the billions, San Francisco has achieved a pension balance that is 104% funded. Now, the reason this is the case is because San Francisco requires that an increase in pension benefits be voted on by the people. In 131 elections, voters have approved 52 increases and turned down 79. The San Francisco approach was recently adopted by the city of San Diego, whose voters approved a comparable charter amendment with 69.9% of the vote in November of 2006. I believe San Diego and San Francisco represent the wave of the future in pension cost containment, and that Newport Beach would benefit by allowing the voters to consider a comparable charter amendment here. Now, the time for us to take proactive action is now, not when we're facing a pending crisis. Our pension liabilities are 88% funded, resulted in an unfunded liability of 61.8 million. This compares to 68.2% and 1.4 billion in San Diego. With our safety employees at three at 50, and miscellaneous employees now at a self-funded two and a half at 55, I believe we have implemented a pension benefit that is equitable, affordable, and competitive with other jurisdictions. But we need to put in place safeguards to protect the long-term fiscal health of our community. No one sits out to create a pension crisis. In fact, at the time benefits are granted, they often looked affor, they often look affordable. But only one, uh, but only one or two contract agreements can radically change the situation. Our unfunded liabilities for safety increased from 40.8 billion on June 30, 2003, to 49.8 billion in 2004, and rose to 51.2 billion in 2005. Miscellaneous unfunded liability nearly doubled from 5.8 million on June 30, 2003, to 10.3 million on 6/30/04, and to 10.6 million on 6/30/05. Now, history teaches us that pension deficits result from three major factors. First, expanded benefits without a clear understanding of the actuarial implications. This was the case throughout California in the late 1990s. Second, by the negative investment performance by PERS, who achieved an unprecedented three consecutive years of negative returns from 2001 to 2003, resulting in a cumulative actuarial loss of 33.95%. And finally, by an effort of cities to raise benefits to be competitive with other higher-paying jurisdictions. CalPERS has changed its calculation method to reduce the impact of large swings up or down due to investment performance, but the other two variables are in our hands. Now, in researching this matter, I went back and looked at the voter pamphlet for the November 1996 election in San Francisco. In this presidential election year, voters approved an increase in fire pensions by 57.7%, approved an increase for retired employees by 50.7%, and rejected an effort led by then-Mayor Willie Brown, Nancy Pelosi, and all but one members of the, of the Board of Supervisors to eliminate the voter requirement by a margin of 72.6%. Even in San Francisco, they realized the value of fiscal restraint. I spoke with Mayor Jerry Sanders in San Diego, who sees this as an important element of his five-year fiscal recovery effort. And for those who would say that this measure is unfair to our employees, let me note the pain in Mayor Sanders' voice, as he described the need to lay off more than 600 city employees because his predecessors did not act when times were better. As a lifetime city employee himself, who retired as police chief, Mayor Sanders understands that reduction in service to the residents and painful layoffs result when fiscal restraint is lost. I've also had the opportunity to speak to representatives of the bond rating agencies, who enthusiastically support initiatives such as this to maintain long-term fiscal health. Now, this proposed charter amendment would simply allow the voters to consent to increases in pension benefits. Contracts would be negotiated as today, but with pension increases subject to a vote. Safeguards prevent this process from being used to unfairly slash existing benefits without the consent of the bargaining unit, and like San Diego, it includes a sunset provision that allows it to be reexamined in 20 years. It requires an independent actuarial cost assessment, ensuring voters have an understanding of what they are voting on. And let me say that this initiative is not about bashing our employees. I believe we have some of the best employees in government, and I believe that they should be fairly compensated, and that our benefits should be competitive with other local government agencies. But in the long run, our ability to continue to provide first-rate services to the community is dependent upon the fiscal health and stability of the city. We have it within our power to ensure that pension deficit mess that is threatening so many other jurisdictions does not compel us to reduce services or compromise on our commitment to excellence. Now, I understand, appreciate, and respect very much the reasons why our bargaining groups are opposed to this measure, but I think we could all agree on three things. Number one, this measure does not reduce the existing pension of any current, future, or retired employee from current levels. Not one penny. Two, our current pension benefits are fair, equitable, and when compared to the private sector, generous. Three, our ability to continue to fund important services, such as fully staffing our ladder trucks, police overtime for Ocean Boulevard, or deployment on the Fourth of July, is fully dependent on the underlying fiscal health of the city. Now, some would say we do not currently have a crisis, and therefore, we should not enact these protections now. But this approach is preventative. It's not curative. If we wait, it's not going to work. No solution will work. San Diego still needed to lay off 600 workers despite enacting this last year. Had Mayor Sanders' predecessors acted six years earlier, when the problem was more similar in scope to ours, these radical layoffs could have been avoided or minimized. Now, some would say that we should trust future city councils to address this problem. Now, I don't believe any city council has knowingly approved a contract thinking that it would create a pension fund crisis. But in fact, that's exactly what's happened in dozens of cities across our state. History teaches that reliance on city councils to prevent pension deficits is a strategy that has uniformly failed to prevent the problem. Either from lack of a complete actuarial look, which this measure would require, or changes in market or economic conditions, deficits have ballooned beyond the ability of city councils to adequately control them. I know there's a lot of concern on the part of our colleague, my colleagues, that pension control remain with local public officials. But let me remind you, and some of you may not be aware of this, because I, I had to research this, that from 1999 to 2003, the law in the state of California was that if an impasse was reached in a negotiation, binding interest arbitration was imposed. That means that the decision on compensation issues was made not by elected officials. It was made by an arbitrator, a third-party arbitrator, and imposed on the city. Now, that legislative victory in Sacramento was a culmination of an effort throughout 1990s by bargaining groups to obtain binding interest arbitration at the local level. And indeed, 20 jurisdictions in California have binding interest arbitration language in their local charters. Now, thankfully, this provision was declared unconstitutional in 2003 by the California Supreme Court, but not before wreaking fiscal havoc across local government. And the point is this: we cannot predict what help the legislature will decide to give to public employee bargaining units in the future. But we can certainly predict, and would be very naive if we did not, that once we have a more labor-friendly governor, that they will be back again asking for additional assistance, which is why we must act to put in place today these kinds of protections. Uh, and let me also say, some have asked, you know, "Why are we doing this? Why do we need to do this now? Is this driven by ideology?" You know, it's not. I'm a financial advisor. I believe in finding solutions that work and fixing problems before they become big problems. San Francisco has worked. The record is there. Other things, ignoring the problem, thinking it'll take care of itself, has not worked. Now, I encourage my colleagues to learn not only from the mistakes of others, but also from the successes, and put this measure on the ballot. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Curry. Is there any further comment by council?
Uh, just that, um, I know that there is a constituency that, that does want very much to vote on these things, and I respect Councilman Curry for representing that point of view. But there's also a very large constituency out there that wants nothing to do with this. I've gotten a number of emails from people saying, "Please, I don't want to educate myself on this. That's why I voted for you." And while I like to think that we are the dream team here with all this expertise, I have absolute confidence that equally bright people will be elected in the future, and they will have the same concerns. So, um, I will not be supporting this, but, uh, I thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Anyone else on council want to comment? All right. I'll open it up for public comment. Welcome, Mario.
Hi, Mayor Rosansky. Mayor Rosansky, members of the city council. As all of you know, I'm Mario Manero, the, uh, chief of staff to Orange County Supervisor John Morlock. And of course, we've taken certain positions regarding pensions, and I wanted to talk tonight about Councilmember Curry's proposal. I would mention as well that I am a resident of this state. I want to address and counter four arguments that have been made against placing a city charter amendment that would require a public vote for any public employee pension changes that would result in increased costs to the taxpayers of the city. The first argument is that the people shouldn't have to vote on every employee compensation measure. It's a waste of taxpayer dollars. The opportunity for a popular plebiscite has its origins in the progressive reforms initiated in the early 20th century in California, and particularly in the institutions of the initiative and referendum. These reforms recognized that some issues require direct popular vote as a veto or other form of control on representative government. The model for allowing taxpayers to vote on a pension plan enhancement comes, as Councilmember Curry noted, from the charter county and city of San Francisco, as well as the state's constitution. In a nutshell, if you create a debt that is an obligation, an economic burden, on the taxpayers, they should have a say in the matter. If we are burdening future generations, that decision ought to be made by more than just some representatives. It should be the collective decision of the electorate. Indeed, this perspective was institutionalized by the voters by Proposition 13, for it places restrictions when placing economic burdens on taxpayers. The second argument is that, and it's just been alluded to, this argument, this issue's just simply too complicated for voters to understand. Many of the initiatives we are asked to vote on statewide are far more complicated. Read your voter ballot every time. I'm a constitutional lawyer and, and law professor, and they're difficult for me to get through sometimes. Nevertheless, this one is actually fairly simple. When we increase pension benefits, are we providing for an income stream to pay for them? Or are we banking on future unknown and unbudgeted revenues and thus creating an unfunded liability? The GASV 45 requirement of disclosing the impact of unfunded liability at a minimum requires the government inform its constituency of the amount of that liability. That requirement presumes, therefore, that the constituency is capable of understanding the nature and amount of the liability. We should respect the intelligence of the voters. The third argument is, there's no need for this measure, because Newport Beach has already granted its employees the three-at-50 level for public safety, which is the maximum level under current state law. Ten years ago, no one would have believed. granted its employees the three at 50 level for public safety, which is the maximum level under current state law. 10 years ago, no one would have believed that public safety employee benefits would have gone to three at 50, allowing retirement at age 50, and accruing 3% of salary for every year of service. But in fact, that's where we are. The legislature was persuaded by a number of public safety unions to enact a new pension benefit schedule that allowed for 3% at 50, and once one or two larger municipalities adopted it, the avalanche toward that benefit began. Indeed, those same unions persuaded the legislature to allow retroactive benefits, something the supervisor and I, as you may know, are challenging as illegal and unconstitutional. Now, with the adoption of GASB 45, requiring disclosure of the unfunded liability created by these new pension benefits, particularly when they are retroactive and without pre-funding, municipalities are discovering just how in the hole many of them are. Councilmember Curry referred to you having an 88% funding, that's 12% unfunded liability. Most actuaries will tell you that anything more than 10% should be a cause for concern. There's nothing that prevents the legislature from increasing benefits authority again, and then another round of increases could be in the offing. Only cities like San Francisco and San Diego are able to resist the tide of increases by first submitting such increases to a more likely skeptical electorate, who must, as taxpayers, pay the ultimate bill. The fourth argument I've heard is that, as other municipalities grant these benefits, it will harm recruiting. Recruiting is a favored argument in this area. The Orange County Sheriff claims, for example, that granting the retroactive benefits aided recruiting, even though no recruit could ever receive retroactive benefits. He also argues that without the richest benefits offered anywhere, you can't recruit the best. There are problems with that argument, however. First, it feeds directly into the round of increases. It means that once any municipality increases benefits above the prior highest benefit, most other municipalities are compelled to do so as well, in the name of recruiting. The second problem--
Mario, your time is technically up. I mean, how much longer is this--
I'm just about finished. Thank you, Mayor. The second fallacy is that a municipality with lower benefits can't recruit. But the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, which does not have three at 50, has no trouble recruiting, and its academy classes are quite large. Why is this? Because for entry-level potential public safety officers, who are young, looking to start a family, the primary economic incentive is not the backend, but rather is the salary they need now to pay for living near where they work. By not increasing benefits to the richest possible level, there's more money on the table for higher salaries, making for a very attractive recruiting package. By putting the measure on the ballot doesn't mean you're advocating a position. You're simply declaring this is a matter of import for your constituencies, and recognize that this is, in fact, the history of voter initiatives in California. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable members. My name is Reed Royalty. I'm the president of the Orange County Taxpayers Association. I came with two hours of material, and I'll try to cover five major points in my three minutes. First of all, the salaries and benefits are a time bomb for this city and for the whole state. Arnold Schwarzenegger calls them "a train-on-the-tract disaster." The Public Employees Retirement Journal, which is the very bible of the public employees, calls these benefits "too rich by far because of greed, wishful thinking, and faulty numbers." That's a quote from the Public Employees Retirement Journal. Business Week calls it "a sinkhole for taxpayers." Second point, these salaries and benefits that we now see, that Dr. Manero explains so well, are based on some legislative dissections, not yours, but the state legislature. In 1990, we got the single highest year of salary from the legislature. California is the only state that bases the pensions on the single highest, or usually last year of salary. Everybody else in the whole country uses an average of three years or five years, something of that sort. That item passed at 2:45 in the morning on the last day of the legislature. There were no staff reports, it just zipped right through because it was presented on the floor as for the sergeants in the legislature only. Nobody read the bill, had time to read the bill to discover that it applied to everybody. The cost of that was $100 million a year, and it's growing. The worst thing about it is, by concentrating all the benefits, or the calculation of benefits in the last year, you invite pension spiking in the last year. And again, we only have that in California. Then in 1999, we had SB 400, which was co-authored by Assemblyman Coria. That passed after 45 seconds of debate, passed unanimously, cost $500 million per year, and is growing, and that was the 3% at 50. That got through because calpers went into the legislature and said, "You will never have to contribute into your retirement systems again because the stock market's performance has made all of that obsolete." That was either dumb, or it was deceptive, but obviously, it was wrong, and I don't think any reasonable person believed the stock market would never take a dive. Also, we have conflicts of interest in the process. The managers that you rely on to do some of your bargaining get the same benefits as the troops, for the most part. There's no tension between management and labor, as we have in the private sector. Third point, these things are needlessly lavished. You need it to attract employees? No. If you advertise for public employees, the line will form around the block, even before we went to 3% at 50 and the others for the general employees. Do you need it to retain employees? No. Public employees seldom quit, and they're very seldom fired. In fact, these things have the opposite effect. They cause people to retire because of the rich benefits before they really need to retire. Does it compensate for lower pay? No. Pensions and Investments Magazine, another insider magazine in the trade, says that public employees make $5 per hour more than people in the private sector working the same jobs, and the Employees Benefits Research Institute says people in the public sector make, on the average, $35 an hour versus $24 an hour, including benefits in the private sector. Fourth point, it's unfair to taxpayers. The public employees are excellent people. I do not dispute that. They are the equals of any of us in the private sector, so they deserve equal benefits. They don't deserve benefits that are so much richer. Private workers are not retiring earlier and with more money. They are working longer into their 70s, and sometimes, I know, I'm one, in order to support themselves. Pensions and Investments Magazine says, quote, "Why should public employees have better benefits than the working staffs paying the taxes?" Final point, it's a tough problem, but it can be managed. Will the legislature do it for you? No. The Public Employees Retirement Journal boasts, boasts, that when the legislators at the state level are confronted by unions, they turn into, quote, "jellyfish in a suit." So the legislature isn't going to fix it for you. Can you fix it with a tax increase? Not really, that just papers it over. The San Francisco plan, as presented to you by Mr. Curry, will work, it's proven to work. The city of San Diego didn't adopt that until they had a disaster. I urge you, please, do not wait for a disaster before you adopt such a program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is David Bonson. I live here in Newport Beach in the Heights, and I'm here this evening as a Newport Beach citizen, a board member of the Lincoln Club of Orange County, and a businessman in the community, who travels the state and even the country, hearing scorn and ridicule at the state of affairs here in our beloved county, and more recently, even in our own beloved city. My brief comments tonight will take a slightly different approach than the two friends of mine and peers who have shared their sentiments, in that I don't even feel a need tonight to speak to the merits of pension reform. I frankly believe it's so obvious, it's surreal to me, that we need to have the conversation. But even apart from that, what we're here tonight is very specific wording in a measure. I confess to being a little dismayed at a couple of the comments from Councilmember Gardner. I did not realize that decisions were made for this measure prior to me taking an evening away from my family to come speak to you tonight, and I certainly do not realize that the reasoning given as to whether or not we would want to put it on the ballot for constituents to decide is because we believe the constituents have already decided. I will assure the honorable council member that she is not hearing a representative sample of the feeling of the constituents in this city, and I do speak on behalf of the Lincoln Club formally when I say that we are very, very zealous and eager about this issue. But that zeal comes from our care for the city, our care for fiscal responsibility, and most importantly, our care for the constituents that Councilwoman Gardner referred to knowing their opinion on. I'm not here tonight to talk specifically about pension reform and the specifics that play therein. I'm here to talk about giving that right to the people to decide. This issue represents a legacy moment for the Newport Beach City Council, in my opinion, and we have come to discuss in the last couple of months that this will be a sword that the Lincoln Club and a surprisingly high amount of influential and activist members of our community are willing to fall on. The legacy I refer to is the chance to be an example to other cities, to the county, and to the state, that Newport Beach takes fiscal responsibility seriously, but even beyond that measure, cares for the voice of the people. We are very organized, we're very committed to this cause, and I would implore the council members who've come to the meeting tonight without their mind made up, to hear what myself and the two prior speakers have had to say. There's simply no denying that the localities that have implemented a similar measure have benefited immensely. They run fully funded pension liabilities and then some. A good portion of my notes I can skip over this evening, because Councilwoman Curry wisely and eloquently pointed out a good portion of those issues already. But the issue that I want to refer to is, again, reiterating, we are not trying to remedy a present wrong, we're trying to prevent a future wrong. And while I can appreciate Councilwoman Gardner's optimism that future councils will also be made up of such wise souls that no bad law could ever be passed, I would suggest that the people that you represent also in the future may contain such wisdom as needed to make that decision. Representative government objections are disingenuous at best and cartoonishly conflicted at worst. We would never have voter referendums, or propositions, or ballot initiatives at all if voter say-on-issue was exclusively through their elected officials. Every future city council will inherit decisions and limits and rules that past voters have set into play. This ballot is merely driven to put safeguards and democratic parameters in play that have worked brilliantly elsewhere. There is simply no excuse for those professing to be fiscal conservatives to not desire such an end. But I challenge you to sit down tonight and hear how big of a deal this will be. I hear the same innuendo you do regarding threats from the unions. I implore you to look past their threats and tactics, and instead, listen to the people, those who can always be counted on to have the best interests of the community at heart. What we are talking about tonight is the possibility of putting something on a ballot for the people to decide, and if indeed, Councilwoman Gardner's constituents have made their point clear to her, and they do represent the whole city, I believe we'll find that out when this ballot is voted by us, the people of Newport. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate--
Mr. Bonson had a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
You indicated you are a fiscal conservative. Do you support enhancements to these pensions?
I'm sorry--
Do you support enhancements to public employee pensions?
Well, again, any particular enhancement that would have to be considered, in my mind, has to be considered based on the merits of the specifics in that case. To my knowledge, there are no specific proposed enhancements on the table that I would have available to consider. If you're talking on countywide--
Well, let's say--
I certainly would not support enhancements, meaning raises--
Right.
--when there's unfunded liability, just like I don't want my wife to spend more than I make.
Let's give you a real-life-- Sure, I understand. Let's give you a real-life example. Lifeguards, 3% at 50, you support that?
Well, to my knowledge, it's already voted on, and so I don't, I did not study that issue to the same degree.
So you support it, then?
Well, I haven't studied it. So again, it wasn't on the ballot. Had it been on the ballot, I most certainly would have studied it, as I assure you, the other responsible members of the community would too.
And what would have gone into your analysis?
What would have gone into my analysis in determining whether or not 3% at 50 was affordable would have been an evaluation of the fundedness versus unfundedness of the pension liability, period. In that sense, it isn't very different to what Mario referred to earlier, the income stream's ability to pay future obligation. I guess you can call me old-fashioned, I just come from a place where I think that's what we ought to do, if we can afford it, measured on the merits. I would not be measuring on whether or not I like lifeguards, I love lifeguards.
Okay, so your determination is whether or not our pension fund is adequately funded? Do you believe that it's not currently adequately funded?
No, I believe it should be based on, again, if I were the one voting on the merits of a pension, whether it be the lifeguard issue or any future issue, to play with your hypothetical, I believe that it should be based on the affordability, the fundedness versus unfundedness, and of course, market competition. If we could afford to pay every lifeguard a million dollars a year, I would not advocate paying them a million dollars a year. And so in that case, it would not be based on the unaffordability, it'd be based on the fact it was irresponsible in the market environment. So I believe that wisdom would require voters to take into account all aspects of the issue, but as a fiscal conservative, the element of my character you referred to earlier, that part of me would require it be affordable.
Right. It was the element of your character that you represented, you are--
The fiscal conservative nature.
Yes.
Yeah, I would say so, yes.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach, and I want to start off by saying hooray to Governor Schwarzenegger for the guts to pass legislation that calpers will no longer invest in any companies that do, you know, like business with Iran. I have a question that I hope somebody here can answer, because I remember this at a study session not so long ago. You talk about the city of San Francisco being 100% funded, and of course, we all know that that 100% funded is in calpers, which is in the stock market. It's not 100%.
It's not in calpers.
Oh, it's not in calpers? So we wouldn't have our money in calpers anymore?
We would have our money in calpers. San Francisco is a pension system.
Okay, so we're not voting on anything like that? So they have 104% liability? I mean, they're 104% funded, because what I'm trying to get at, so they don't get to lose their money in the stock market, so say we were--
It's invested in the stock market.
Okay. Oh, it's not at calpers. Okay, so we have our money in calpers. Can I start my clock now, okay? We have our money invested in calpers, and so we only have 88% funded. So if we had 100% funded, and we lost money in the stock market, we would then have to get that money back again, like we've had to repay the stock market before in the past when they've lost money. And I remember Chris Street being here, and him saying to you guys in an afternoon meeting that sometimes, it doesn't make sense to be fully funded, because then if you do have a down slope, then you got to pay for what you don't have in there, plus you have to make up the difference. So maybe I'm all wrong on that, but you can talk about that later on, because also, I know Reed Royalty, Reed, you don't remember, but I know you from the days of supervisors during the bankruptcy days, so I used to go to those meetings too. So anyway, I guess, of all people here, I've never been endorsed by a union in this city. I think if we put anything on the ballot, what it should be is that our elections do not come with endorsements by our unions. That would be something that the people of the city are clamoring for, okay? There isn't one person that I've talked with out there that has said, gee, we really need to put the pensions on the budget. As a matter of fact, the council, this staff report that you have before you tonight, the one that I got at the Finance Committee meeting, every single page said it was from the office of Dave Ellis. It was from the office of Dave Ellis. That's been taken off of this document. And so I guess part of me is totally pissed off tonight that we would actually think that our city needs to be run, first of all, by the Lincoln Club, and second of all, by Dave Ellis. That isn't how our system operates. I've run in 2004 and in 2006, and I never got the endorsement of the Republican Party, of the Lincoln Club, or of the lifeguards, or the fire department, or the police department, and I've lost by 2,000 votes or less both times. So I think that people, like, respect me for who I am, and it doesn't mean that I need endorsements by anybody. I did not like the tone that was taken with you, Councilmember Gardner, and I apologize for that. I think it was totally unnecessary to beat you up. And secondly, what I wanted to say is the fact that we have a city that we love, we don't need it run by outsiders, and that when I did run for office, we did have, we didn't have enough policemen in the city, it was something that was being kept quiet. We boast of how we have 100,000 people some days on a weekend in the summertime. We only had seven people working in July and August, protecting 100,000-plus tourists, plus the residents of Newport Beach, because they could not find people that they felt were qualified enough because of our pay scale. The police department in this city puts on a fire, I mean, they put on a life vest every single day, a bulletproof vest, to go to work for us. They always have interviewed all the candidates that have run for office, but I don't take anything away for the paramedic that would ever come to your house and save your life, and then when you went to go vote, I would hope. See, I don't really think, my husband had a business, he had to do labor negotiation. See, I don't really think, my husband had a business, he had to do labor negotiation. I don't really think this is the right time for this. If you want to put something on the ballot, put the fact that we're going to have fluoride in our water, because, no, because, no, honestly, Proposition 216 says that you can't pay for anything, that we shouldn't have to have our prices raised for services, okay, because we're supposed to vote on these things. The fluoridation right now comes free, but eventually, we're going to be having to pay for that. The toilet-to-tap water that none of us got the right to vote on, but was stopped in San Diego and in Los Angeles, off the subject, I know, but in the meantime, that's Proposition 216 also, we didn't get a right to vote for that. So I don't agree with this whole thing, and if it means that somebody here wants to go to Sacramento, or if somebody is saying, if you pass this for us, we'll look at you more favorably in the future for other things, I'm going to put it out on the table. That's what it sounds like to me, and that isn't the kind of city that we live in. And I don't, God bless the Lincoln Club. Thank you very much for all your years of service here, but we're getting more and more Democrats every year, because I go door-to-door and I do petitions a lot, and there's more Democrats living here than ever before. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dolores. I don't want to hear one word about fluoridation out of your mouth, Ed.
Hear what? I'm slightly hard to hear.
No fluoridation?
No fluoridation, no. My teeth are all mine, too. Most of them. I didn't intend to speak to you this evening on this issue, and please take off my hat, Oasis, and put a different hat on, called resident of Newport Beach for 38 years, so people thoroughly understand where I'm from. I'm a retired California Teachers Association staff person. I've been retired, I've worked for the California Teachers Association for 25 years as a consultant and labor negotiations. I went through the collective bargaining history for teachers. I helped enlist over 20,000 teachers into the collective bargaining movement. So I want to address this, you've all received my email, I hope you've got a copy from the city manager. I don't have a prepared speech, but I've been listening very carefully, and all due respect to you, Mr. Curry, because I realize how much you support my other issue, which is the Oasis. I am very fearful of this particular action. As I said in my email to you, the president wasn't able to dilute Social Security. The governor got his possibly really put down by the voters of California when he tried to change the pension plans and other kinds of plans for employees in the state of California. The county now, county supervisor, is having difficulty proving his point, and now I see that we're now attacking the collective bargaining issue and the pension plan at the local level. And I'm very concerned about that attack. I would just like to read to you what I wrote to you, but for the public record here, "I suspect that putting this issue on the ballot for voter approval is a backdoor attempt to destroy public employees' collective bargaining rights." And unfortunately, some of our council members may be caught up in that. What some people couldn't get at the state, at the national level, at the state level, are they are now trying to get, piece by piece. I hope Newport Beach will not be caught up into it as well. I too take exception to the fact of a comment that was published in the Daily Pilot the other day relative to the chairperson of the Lincoln Club, when he said, "We have six Republicans sitting on our council." I don't care what your political affiliation is. This is not a political party, this is not a political stature. You folks have been elected in a nonpartisan office, and if we are to bring a partisan issue to this city, I can almost guarantee you there will be a serious negative impact on it. This business of attacking pensions, and in my years of negotiations, there are always at least six alternatives or six options to resolving an issue. All you need to do is deal with the issue and not with the personality, and certainly not with the political agenda. Look at the issue. And anyway, I implore this, implore this city council not to get caught up in this partisan issue. It is a partisan issue, particularly since we have representatives of a partisan political party presenting the issue to this city council. And I'm not stating one way or the other, which I would vote, but I'm asking you to look at the issue. We have competent people who can negotiate. You negotiate contracts every day or every week in this city. The city is not facing any kind of a financial crisis because of the contracts which you negotiate. If you take this one compensation issue, which is pension, when will you stop, where will you stop on the next voter approval? Will you put in the salary compensation, vacations, sick leave, all of the other compensation package? Where will it stop? And I think that this is a very dangerous step for the city to contemplate in putting it to the voter, not because I think voters are stupid, I think voters are too busy to take care of the business, the minute business of a collective bargaining agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name is John Desmond, I'm president of the Newport Beach Police Management Association, and I also like to consider myself a working stiff who pays my taxes. But I'm not here to threaten anybody, I'm here to basically say is that our association believes that this council, and for that matter, any future council, would be in the best position to decide the fiscal impact and liability of any future retirement benefits for our city employees. This proposal is an abdication of this council's and future council's authority to make decisions related to employee contracts. It's not that the voting members of our community aren't capable of understanding all the issues involved when it comes to retirement benefits, but rather it would place a huge burden on the average voter to ensure they have all the facts in order to make an informed decision. And I would just point out the number of people that left here, how much people are really interested in employee pension and benefits, the whole room emptied out. So obviously, the voters aren't real curious as far as what goes on with pensions, and I think this is a prime example. We had a room full of obvious voters here, they're not here anymore to hear anything on this issue. This very council is capable of making a recent decision on pension benefits, and we believe that future councils would be just as competent to make those kinds of decisions. Now, other than trying to make some kind of political statement, what's the real purpose of this proposal? Rather than fixing a problem, this proposal would create one. From our perspective, this proposal is fraught with problems that could lead to turmoil when it comes to reaching an agreement with any of the bargaining units. How can any agreement be reached on any contract that involves a pension benefit, no matter how minor, if a public vote needs to be held? Since the city has separate agreements with each of the bargaining units, how practical and how expensive would those elections be? As pointed out in the literature, San Francisco had 131 elections on benefits. It's got to be costly just to do the elections. We've all seen the problems that can and do occur when council authority is stripped away and put out to public vote. Therefore, the Police Management Association asks that you not abdicate your authority and tie the hands of this council or of the councils you have to come. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jeff Boils, and I'm a captain with the Fire Department, and I also serve as the president of the Firefighters Association. And I'd like to echo what Ms. Otting said as well, that...
Fluoridation?
No, Ms. Otting said, as far as the tone used towards you, Ms. Gardner, was improper and unbecoming. Having said that, I wish to comment on tonight's proposal from the standpoint of the Firefighters Association. And I can stand up here and debate the philosophical differences between myself and the Lincoln Club, but that's going to become folly at some point, so I too am spending time away from my family, so this is the way it goes and this is how politics work. But we all know that in the city of Newport Beach is fiscally sound, and we're in no danger of losing that status at this point. The city of San Diego's in the crisis they're in because of criminal activity, and the city of San Francisco does have such an amendment in their charter. As a result, their firefighters work a 48-hour work week compared to our 56-hour work week, and they have nearly twice the benefits in other areas such as time off and pay. They don't get it necessarily in pension, which their pension is nearly what ours is as well. So to me, the main argument for this proposal they're using is to de-politicize the negotiation process. But as it stands right now, three parties sit at the table when we negotiate: the employees, myself, and the others that negotiate on our behalf, the city staff and management, and the public through the direction of the city council that's given to city staff. Every contract comes up before the public and is open for dialogue and specific discussion prior to ratification by the council. Full financial disclosure is always made public, which leads me to my question, same as Mr. Desmond was saying, doesn't putting negotiation items onto the ballot in turn make it even more political? That's going to force us into a hand of now having to run a campaign to negotiate. All that being said, my focus, what I want to talk about, is the process and its inefficiency. And I'm sure that Ms. Wood, who sits on negotiations, and Mr. Bloudow can attest to this. Our negotiation reality is this: we sit at a table and we come to a resolution based on the direction given by city council. The contract is before the council, and the public has comment, and then the council votes on it. This proposal would add an element of disjointedness to the negotiation process that would cause severe inefficiency. As an example, the Firefighters Association is getting ready to start negotiations shortly here in October. Should a pension enhancement come to the table, we would stall out, even if we had a deal by January, we would stall out either until next November or until we had a special election, which brings in all the peripheral issues of wasting taxpayers' money and things like that. But what I don't want to get into is, like I said, the philosophical differences. It's a colossal waste of your time, of my time, and of your time. We negotiate right now, this city is very transparent, has been, and I believe it will be, when it comes to negotiations. And I'm personally insulted and stunned at the arrogance of the Lincoln Club saying that they'll be very, very disappointed in that there's six Republicans on this council. For the life of me, I can't understand why the GOP is subscribing to a system of wasting public taxpayers in the form of special elections, stripping you guys of your ability to vote on these complex financial issues and promoting ineffective use of city staff time by dragging out future negotiations. And while I'm flattered by the underhanded compliment that the unions run this city, I would have to disagree. I don't think the unions run this city, and nor should the Lincoln Club. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Brent Jacobson. I'm with the Newport Beach Lifeguard Management. I too am a resident of Newport Heights, been a resident for 40 years. Right now, we have a great relationship with the current city council and staff. I have to echo Mr. Curry's comments that we feel like we've been treated equitably in all areas. But we really, we like the position that we believed in in green light. We would like the city to keep its representative form of government and avoid government by referendum, and I do not want to see us pulled into a situation that is messy like green light was, that is messy like City Hall was, and take employee relationships, benefits, wages, and all of our working conditions out to the voters. It's detailed analysis, it's detailed facts, and it takes a lot of time, but it's very boring. Again, I, there are many members of the council up there, did not vote for our contract, but they did sit and listen and take the time, and we appreciate that. I want to reiterate, we believe in the council as is, and that delegating that authority is just going to lead to problems in the future. I don't want to see every one of our contract negotiations turned to us going out to the public and dealing with, essentially campaigning for what benefits we should receive. I love the city, and we are fortunate in our group that there are a couple members that actually get to own property here, and they love the city, too. And we seek only the best, and we want to keep contributing, but we do feel a little, you know, challenged by the Lincoln Club. We're kind of flustered that they would choose to get involved with this, but it is their decision. Again, Newport has a history of very passionate debate with very small issues: the Oasis, the harbor, the green light, unfortunately, I have to pick on green light because that's probably the mother of all debate, the general plan, and right now, City Hall. Do we really want city benefits to go down that route? Probably not. Again, we, the lifeguards, we really appreciate the time and consideration, just the open off, you know, open-door policy of being able to talk to all the council people and members of the public about what we receive. We feel very privileged to work here, and we'd like to continue that relationship. And we think that the council is in the best position to maintain that relationship by putting in the hours of study and time that is needed to negotiate contracts and maintain that fair and equitable working environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this matter?
I have a urgent matter of clarification.
Sir, you've had your time. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Terri Craig, I'm the president of the City Employee Association, and like everyone here, or most of them have stated that the city council is, are the ones that do vote on it. We appreciate it, we don't always agree. We don't always agree when we're in negotiations. However, we are always in discussions with them where I believe that they are fair and equitable. Do we always go away happy? No, but that is what negotiations are for. I would urge you to maintain the way it is done now, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else that'd like to speak on this matter? Okay, so you know what, I'll bring it back to council. Are there any other council members that would like to speak on this matter?
Do you have a motion for?
I haven't heard any.
Mr. Mayor, if I could. First of all, I don't want to run in the legislature, so if that's the illusion, you heard it here first. I would like to thank our bargaining units for, by the way, for the tone of their debate and for the tone of their comments, and I truly appreciate that, and I think that elevates the debate in the city. And I appreciate their comments. I would remind my colleagues on the city council that it was not so long ago, however, that not so much our guys, but their statewide counterparts had as their primary position moving the decision-making from elected officials to a binding arbitrator who rendered these decisions across our state. And I don't think this ought to be a partisan decision. This is a decision about putting in place protections for our budget and for our citizens to preserve our services, to maintain our employees going forward in the future. And we need to do that in a very prudent way. Now, I think it's clear that the votes are not here to do this tonight, so rather than put my colleagues in a place of having to take a position, I'm going to withdraw the item tonight. I'm disappointed in having to do that, because I think we've missed an opportunity here to show leadership and to really put in place some protections for future generations against issues that we really can't foresee, because we don't know what the legislature is going to do in terms of offering new retirement programs, but we can certainly predict that they're going to offer more. We don't know what the legislature is going to do to assist labor and their side in the negotiations, but it would be very naive if we believed it would be nothing, particularly once we have a more labor-friendly governor. And so there are minefields ahead that the city needs to be very concerned about in order to protect the level of services that we have. This apparently is not the time to do it tonight, but I feel that that time will come not only for us, but for our colleagues in local government throughout California.
Thank you, Mr. Curry, for withdrawing the item.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? I guess my only comment is that, you know, I believe that the real future in pension reform, and I guess Mario beat it out of here already. reform, and I guess Mario beat it out of here already. Oh, there you are. You're hiding behind a wall. I'm sorry.
I don't hide behind a wall.
I do support, actually, John's efforts at pension reform and looking into these items. I think it is an item of statewide significance, certainly not just local significance. You know, we're not going to vote on it tonight. Council encourages withdrawing his motion, so I'm not going to address the merits of the particular motion, but I think we do need to encourage, you know, our state legislators, our other elected officials, our governor and whoever, to look at this and really... Because, you know, singling out Newport Beach for special treatment when we have other cities all around that don't have similar... If the playing ground isn't even, you know, it's not going to be to our betterment. So I think we need to have an even playing ground throughout the state. I would encourage all of you, anybody who's interested in the Lincoln Club, certainly I know you have a lot of clout in a lot of areas outside of our city council, and... Sorry. And, you know, to encourage our state legislators to take this up actively. With that, I'll just...
Right, and I just wanted to thank everyone for coming, too, and sharing your perspective on this issue, and I think we can all agree upon, I know you're a Newport Beach resident, that we do have top-notch employees, and being a coastal city, we are able to attract really high-caliber employees and all the services that we provide for residents. So thanks again for coming down.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, first off, I'd like to echo the comments about the professionalism with which the employee associations that we deal with conduct themselves. It's uniform, and it's appreciated. I also, though, share the comments of the mayor regarding the fact that this is an issue that needs to be addressed. It should be addressed at a statewide level, because one of the main concerns that I have, and by the way, I'm not necessarily cool to Councilmember Curry's suggestion here, but one of the main concerns that I have is the whipsaw effect that municipal governments are subject to when these kinds of things are dealt with on a municipality-by-municipality basis. And so I am hopeful that there will be a statewide solution here that will allow conservatism and care in terms of expansion of benefits and create an environment in which municipal governments can negotiate in a level playing field.
Thank you, Councilman Hen. Any further comment? Okay, that will close the discussion on this item. This is our last item. We have motions for reconsideration.
I...
Well, let her read it.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, are there any motions for reconsideration?
I do have one, Mr. Mayor.
Imagine that.
This would be for supplemental agenda item number 20 regarding the selection of outside counsel. We did neglect to add into the scope of services for outside counsel the requirement to prepare materials necessary to extend the moratorium on group presidential uses and advise the city council on the moratoriums, extension in the current form or in a modified form. And so I would like to request that we reconsider this motion with that addition to the scope of services.
Is it... Yeah, city attorney.
I believe Assistant City Manager Kiff Kiff also wanted one additional item added as far as advising, it's item number nine, advising the city council, city attorney and city staff on the ordinance and implementation as requested. Assistant City Manager Kiff asked that the planning commission be added to that portion of the scope of work.
You know, Aaron, I'm looking at this, and I thought that that was in what was presented to us, but if I'm wrong about that, then let's make sure we add that, too.
Okay, so noted. So we have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Open it up for public comment. Seeing none, close, please vote.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. Thank you.